It is August 19th, 2024. My name is Mary Hartman. I am here to call to order the joint meeting of the Select Board, the School Committee, and the Finance Committee. I see that the Select Board has a full house. I will turn to the School Committee to take a roll call of who's here.
Yeah.
So people have a call to order.
Yeah, I think we can just call to order. We have a quorum.
Yeah, we should be able to do it. I'm starting to see if Brian's online.
It's okay. We have a quorum.
Yeah, I just don't know if we need to do a roll call. Right, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Can anyone scroll and see if he's on there? I can't. Otherwise, who are they doing a roll call with?
I don't see Brian.
So let's start with CPS. Do you have a quorum?
Yeah.
You do.
Yeah, we have a quorum.
Are they all here or do you have some online?
Everyone's online. Brian is the only one.
No, I can tell everyone is here.
Yeah, CPS, everyone is here. We're missing one member for the region.
Okay.
And everyone's in the room. We have a quorum.
And you have a quorum. Great. And FinCon?
FinCon, we definitely have a quorum in the room. I can't tell if there's anybody online. Can who's ever controlling the Zoom scroll so we can see the attendees? I think we're good. I think we're good.
Great. Okay. Okay, let's get going. One of the FY25 Select Board goals, our primary goal actually, is to align the boards in town, the Select Board, the FinCon, the school committees, and town staff around common goals going forward. And in order to make that happen, we need people to show up, we need people to listen, we need people to ask questions. So thank you all for coming. We couldn't meet this goal, we don't have a chance, without you being here. So thank you for being here. I also want to thank the staff for all the hard work they've done in the last few weeks to bring us the results of their work, specifically Town Manager Carrie LaFleur, CFO Anthony Ansaldi, the School Superintendent Dr. Hunter, and now Bob Conroy, the Director of Finance and Operations. So they've been working together for weeks. So what we're doing tonight is we're going to hear the results of their work, we're going to ask questions, and hopefully we'll come to an agreement moving forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our CFO, Anthony Ansaldi.
Thank you, Mary. So yes, tonight, we're going to talk about the FY26 capital budget planning process. And as Mary said, this was... Next slide. It's not working. So as Mary said, this really was a collaborative effort between the towns and the schools, in particular led by our Town Manager Carrie LaFleur, our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Laurie Hunter, Bob Conroy, the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, as well as myself. And we met and we heard the message loud and clear, and I think at the end of this, hopefully you'll realize that we really want to work collaboratively together on the FY26 budget process that I think will meet the goals of the Select Board of various boards. Next slide, please. So the first thing that we really wanted to make sure that we took into consideration is all that hard work that the Capital Planning Task Force did in their recommendations. So this slide just highlights some of the goals that they had, and I'll just go through it quickly. Really, capital planning process for a 10-year capital plan, a commitment to integrated decision-making, evaluating and prioritizing projects, sequencing debt, an annual timeline, project criteria considering climate impacts. Just to expand on that a little bit more, I think it's also we take into consideration the Select Board goals, the goals of the School Committee, and the goals of the Finance Committee as well. And then a more visible, informally defined process, which hopefully you'll see that tonight, and then putting these recommendations into action. So the next slide talks about, there's two charts up there. The first top chart is what our current CIP tier structure looked like. And just to recap on what that was, Tier 1 was projects $25,000 up to $250,000. That was financed through cash, or some people say pay-as-you-go. Tier 2 was $250,000 with a max of $2 million, and that would be debt within the levy. And Tier 3 was 2 million, greater than $2 million, and there was a max on there of $10 million, and that was going to be excluded debt. So what we proposed, the chart below, is we just added another tier that we wanted to recognize, just because currently we are funding capital outlay projects in our operating budget. So we kind of identified that as Tier A. And those were projects that go from $0 to $10,000 that are funded through our operating budgets. Tier 1 would be any project greater than $10,000, so that's the first change, with the max to $250,000. And again, that would be cash or pay-as-you-go. Tier 2, it would be projects greater than $250,000 with a max of $2.5 million, and that would be debt within the levy. And that's another one of the changes, is that we upped the threshold for Tier 2. Goods and services are just costing a lot more today, so we really wanted to reflect a more number that we're seeing. And then Tier 3, it's really any project that's greater than $250 million, and there's no cap, as you saw with the middle school, right? It could be in excess of $10 million. So we just wanted to say greater than $2.5 million, and that would be excluded debt. And I think everybody here knows how that works. We'll have to go through it if anybody needs to later. But the next slide talks about what our current funding for CIP and debt plan. And we really didn't make many changes to this. We're still going with the 7% to 8% of the prior year's total budget net of excluded debt, with a threshold of 2% to 3% was for Tier 1, and then no more than 5% for Tier 2. So with this proposal that we worked on, it's really what we'd like to see is the Tier 1, because the school's now going to have some Tier 1 capital projects. As we made some good progress last year getting to just above 2% in our pay-as-you-go, our cash, we feel like we might be needing to go closer to 3 to make sure that we take into account all the schools' projects. And on the debt side of it, we'd like to try to stick to 4, which is a little decrease from the 5%, but still, it's really no more than 5%. But really, we're going to try to see if we can stick to a 4% of debt projects. So the next slide talks about some future considerations for funding. And what this really is, is working on developing a free cash policy. We obviously didn't have time to do that, and I think that would be the next policy that we should look at after we get done with the pilot policy. But this language was taken right out of the Department of Revenue Division of Local Services webpage. And just to read it, "It's develop a free cash policy to align with DOR best practices, which recommends that as much as practicable, communities limit their use of free cash to funding one-time expenditures. Example, capital projects, snow and ice deficits, or emergencies. Further, recommended defining a target balance for free cash certification as a percentage of the general fund budget such as 5% to 7%," which I believe we do. So striving to keep it a targeted and unappropriated free cash balance to fund the next certification. So really, we're hoping that a policy can identify more funds from free cash that we can use for capital improvement projects and less within the levy. Next slide. And this is just recaps what our funding for prior capital plans was. So for the town, Tier 1 was always within the guidelines, Tier 2 outside the guidelines, Tier 3 debt exclusion. And for the schools, Tier 1 was outside the guidelines, Tier 2 was outside the guidelines, and Tier 3 was debt exclusion. Next slide. So what this slide just is a graph that just shows you the past five years, our capital spending. So the orange line indicates those projects that were funded through debt. You see that little uptick, and I think it was '21, '22, where some additional middle school debt was taken on. And the blue line is for the towns, Tier 1 projects. So you can see, during the pandemic, just after that, we were low, and then we're starting to climb above, like I said. So we got to just about over the 2% mark this year. So we made some good progress in being able to fund some of the much-needed capital projects that the town was faced with this year and then is faced with in future years as well. That bottom line, the green line, that is the school's Tier 2 debt. And it was pretty flat, because as I think everybody realizes, that school was always just given a number of $900,000 that was part of our Tier 2 debt that they used to fund their capital projects. But with this process that we're outlining tonight, we feel like certainly we want to make sure that the school's capital needs are met, and that's why we're really pushing to that 3% if need be. Every year is going to be different. When we develop the plan, you're going to see 10 years. There might be years that we only need, you know, 2%, you know? And it's not quite the 3. But I think if we have a threshold to work with, then it's going to help us do our project and prioritize, and then kicking out some capital projects, because obviously, you know, we can't fund everything that we have. We certainly saw that last fiscal year with the capital plan. There was a lot more projects than the town had money to do. So a good capital plan will identify when there's room in the out-years with debt and so forth to fund some of these projects and push them out into further years. Next slide. So the timeline for the capital plan. So this is obviously the first of what we think is three meetings, three joint meetings with the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee. This is the presentation of our plan for FY26. The next meeting would be November 18th, and that would be the first draft of the CIP presentation. So first draft meeting, that's going to be everybody's asks. So it'll be unvetted by staff, it's just going to show you what it looks like before we had a chance to go through those and prioritize projects and so forth. So that would be the November 18th meeting. And then a little less than a month later, we would come back with our final CIP presentation that would fit within the funding parameters set forth in these policies. With that, we didn't make really a lot of changes, other than really working together and a commitment to work together and to have one capital item, article, that we think will serve the town well and serve all the committees working together. Because, you know, I've always said, and I probably said it in my interview, you know, we're stronger together. And I think the more that we can be, and by showing staff working strong together, I think as a community, we can all work together and achieve those goals that are set up. So with that, we're happy to answer questions, not just me. There's Superintendent Hunter, there's Town Manager LaFleur, and Bob Conroy, and Mary.
Yeah, let's wait. Wait a second. What I'd like to do is I'd like to open it up to questions from the Select Board first, and then we'll move down. But Anthony, first of all, right now, tonight, we're here just to talk about the process, and we won't see numbers until November 18th.
Correct.
And those are going to be unscrubbed numbers, and we'll see final numbers December 16th.
That's correct.
That's what you're proposing.
Yes.
Okay, good. I'd like to open it up to questions from the Select Board, please. Go ahead.
So first of all, I want to thank Dr. Hunter, Bob Conroy, Anthony, Carrie for getting together and agreeing to a process. That's extremely helpful for all of our boards, that there's one process that we all agree to. So I have some questions. If you go back a few slides, the one with the tiers. Keep going. Back a little more. Keep going. One more. Okay. So Tier 1, above $10,000 to $250,000. It says cash. Does that mean it's not in the operating budget? Because the line above it, under $10,000 is operating budget. So does that mean that Tier 1 is part of this capital article now?
It was always part of the capital article, so it's really not much different than what the town has done in the past. It's just a lower threshold.
Okay, okay. I thought we had some vehicles or some other software or whatever in the operating budget, but I could be wrong on that. But, okay. So going forward, it's going to be in the article?
Yes. So I think, Carrie, you may see some items that you haven't seen because our threshold is lower.
Right.
You know, an example could be maybe bus leases or something. You know, we're still trying to work that out, but those are items that are embedded right now within the school's budget, that we're still talking about that. Putting those out into Tier 1 actually would be more transparent to everybody as far as where the money's being spent.
All right. Thank you. And which of these tiers are in the capital plan that's going to be presented at the November and December meetings? Is it Tiers 1, 2, and 3?
So the capital item, yes. The capital article will be inclusive of 1 and 2. 3 is debt exclusion. That would be, I'd imagine, is that a standalone article, Carrie, in the past, or is that getting embedded into the capital item?
It has been standalone, but my expectation is we would be bringing Tier 3 with it November as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. And then I was confused by the note at the bottom. Is that what's happened in the past, or is it also applied to what you're proposing?
That's, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong with that. That is something that has happened in the past. We wanted to just make note of that's been past practice.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about all the detail of that, because it's not what you're proposing now. Okay. And then my last question is, two more slides forward. I think, keep going. Well, one more. That one. So this is how we funded the prior capital plans. Is this how it's going to be also going forward? Or what are you proposing for within and outside of guidelines going forward?
Do you want to speak to that, Carrie? Tier 1, we were still considering within, in the guidelines, and Tier 2 would be outside the guidelines, and Tier 3 is obviously debt exclusion. Correct, if I'm wrong with that.
No, I thought our proposal was to not include any of capital inside.
That's right. That's right. I'm sorry.
That all of our capital town and school would adhere to the policies, the policy targets.
Right.
But outside of capital.
And the only change to the policy is that cash goes from to 3%, right?
Yes.
So the one that says school capital projects there, that would now be town and school, would both be outside guidelines, is that? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
But you'd have that separate 3% guideline as the target. It'd be in effect its own guideline.
Right.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Select Board?
I did. Thank you. And maybe this is a question for Dr. Hunter, and maybe you already alluded to it. I know the buses are in the operating budget now, and they're leased, but they're leased owned, I believe. So does that mean that that cost is going to come out of the operating budget into capital? Or is that the question that's spoken still?
That is part of the discussion. You know, because we've been doing it differently, there isn't one quick magic wand to wave and get us all synced up. So I think as we get into the processes and budget builds this year, we're going to have to talk on these various things. I think the most important thing is we all know what way we're doing it, right? And then we all agree to it. I think that's been some of the challenges up until now, is the town's had certain things in guideline and out of guideline. We've had different things in guideline and out of guideline. I think ideally, we'd like to get the buses out. Can we do that in a one-year transition? I'm not sure, without creating a lot of havoc. But then there's also other needs in there. We have a lot of technology in there when we buy, especially student hardware. So does that stay in or out? So there's definitely specific things to talk about once we've agreed to this. I think the gift of this conversation is we started with the process, and now we're going to get to each individual topic or project and start to decide where it goes, and be able to communicate that really clearly, which has not necessarily been the case in the past.
Yeah. No, that's great. Devil's in the details. It's going to be a lot of work there. Thank you. And I guess maybe, Anthony, I know this isn't capital, but on the free cash, I just want to ask a question. Historically, the town has sort of had a floor of trying to make sure that we maintain a minimum of 5% for free cash and a maximum of 10%. And usually, when we're over 10%, we're talking about creating stabilization funds, et cetera. Is that still the case, or has things changed?
It's still the case.
Okay.
Yeah, still the case. And that's why we want to have a defined free cash policy, because I think that that will help really quantify that in writing, what we're going to be doing.
Great. Yeah, it was sort of a rule of thumb, if I recall. Thank you.
Quick question. Tier A, which is $0 to $10,000, right? So say you have several computers that you need to buy, each one of them is $1,000, and when you aggregate them, it comes up to 12. Does that push them out of spending that has to be covered in the guideline, or does it stay in the guideline?
So funny, we did talk about this. And I would say that's one of the items that we still need to work through. On the town side, we typically have aggregated all of the technology purchases, particularly for laptops, and included that in Tier 1, that we're paying with cash. But we definitely want to be doing the same thing, and I think that's still an open item for us.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, I'm going to...
Can I?
Yeah.
So, thanks. So thank you. Great that we can all be here, and I'm really glad that we're sharing all this information. I guess my question is around, so kind of sticking around, we're talking about the process, right? So what happens when, like, these are great guidelines, right? But then we're not in the guidelines. Like, how does that sort of work? Because my understanding is like our free cash balance has actually been declining, and I don't know if we're at sort of risk of going below that 5%. And just when I sort of look at the spending, you know, on the capital projects on Slide 13, we've gone from $4.6 million in total to $6.7 million in total over four years. So that's a 46% increase in four years. I have to imagine that's bumping up against some of our guidelines. So how does that sort of work from a process perspective?
So I think if I continued on for five years before that, I think you'd see, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, that capital was probably at that same level it was in this fiscal year that we're in. What happened is you're seeing the debt dip, I should say, as a result of COVID. You know, every community at that point, there was a lot of economic uncertainties. Everybody kind of pulled back, you know? And then fortunately, there was some opera money that communities used to offset some of the capital. But I think that's why you're seeing it. But I think if we projected it out, you would see that it's pretty consistent in the years prior.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's helpful, and just making sure that we have a process if we're bumping up against any of those.
Yeah, well, we have that, we have... Yeah, we have that 3% of prior year for Tier 1, so, you know, we do have that. That's the ceiling there, and we, you know, we're not going to go above the ceiling. We recognize that.
Just one follow-up on that slide that you're referencing. The FY24 capital for the schools was $495,000 and not $900,000. So two years in a row, we've come in at under $500,000, just so that we have accurate numbers. We didn't catch that building of the slides.
And just for clarity, that's CPS.
CPS, yes.
Not the region.
Right. Only CPS is on the slide.
Yes, just CPS.
Okay, I'm going to...
Yeah, one other question. Do we think about the excess and deficiency account the same way we think about free cash when we're talking about policy here?
I'm sorry, Mark. I didn't hear.
Sorry. The question is about E&amp;D at the region. Are we going to handle that in a light way to the free cash policy for the town?
Well, E&amp;D works differently. It's the same concept, but we have different parameters. We are only allowed to carry up to 5%.
Right.
And if you get under 3%, you're going to start getting some attention from Moody's and other places that watch for stabilization funds. We've lived that. So I don't know. And so for us, E&amp;D's sitting at what right now? 1 point?
No, no. Well, we had to spend for NIG exit. We're probably down below 4% now for the first 12 years.
So we shouldn't think of it as part of the capital project process at all, and so this only applies to free cash?
I think that's accurate. I mean, we've been trying to talk on how we might create a capital stabilization fund at the high school, which we did, and then tapped for the roadway project. We've been trying to, I don't think it's E&amp;D, Mark. I think there's another vehicle perhaps for the same idea, if we can all figure how to fund that.
Yeah, well, I was also noticing that in that same future considerations for funding, it was mentioning stabilization funds, and I was wondering whether we should be thinking along those lines.
Yeah.
The other thing that comes to mind for me is the use of debt within the levy limit, and particularly for Tier 2 projects, and whether that's really valuable. I think it might be interesting to track how much interest payments are we doing, and whether, you know, trying to up the levels at which we're in the pay-as-you-go versus taking on debt for these relatively smallish projects, $250,000. So is that part of the conversation? I would assume that's more at the Finance Committee level that conversation is going on, but is it?
Yeah, we did talk about that as a group. You know, again, this was step one, we considered. You know, we figured that there's going to be more tweaks to happen in the future years and see how it goes this year. But yeah, certainly, you know, the ratings agency look at our debt, and right now, you know, we're carrying some good amount of debt, and we're going to be adding another large chunk of money for the middle school and other projects. So I think that's something that we have to be aware of. That's why we're recognizing and trying to, maybe if we can go to that 4%, that 4%, then maybe a little less reliance on debt for some of the capital projects. But, you know, I think a free cash policy, I think setting up these stabilization funds will help drive the plan in future years.
Interest rates are 5 now, not 0 like they used to be.
Right. It was almost like free money, you know, a few years ago, when you have that kind of low interest rate.
Right. And I was also thinking that in years when, for whatever reason, a particular tier doesn't fill its allocation, it might make more sense to take that remainder, put it in a stabilization fund in order to draw out, and we could therefore do exactly what we're talking about, which is stabilize the level of these increases rather than having to bounce them around.
Yep. Great point. That could be part of the free cash policy. It's a great point.
Good idea.
Because capital is bumpy, and then back to the taxpayer in a given year, when you have to do the roof, it's going to go up a bit, and you don't have as much. So that's a great point.
It is. Okay, Carrie, do you have any, do you want to see if your committee has any questions? You good? Good?
So I assume we would adhere to the rest of the capital and the task force recommendations. Either does something, you know, can you study?
I can hear you.
Did I get it? Did I get it?
Yeah.
So I assume these are just updating those specific items of the capital planning task force recommendations that will continue to adhere, and if you have other questions, to the task force recommendations, which was aimed at very large projects.
I'm sorry?
Which was aimed at very large projects only.
Okay, my understanding is that tonight, what we're looking at is the result of discussions between staff for Tier 1, 2, and 3, and now we have a new Tier A. Can you be more specific about what you're talking? Yeah, go ahead.
So the capital planning task force asked for a 10-year plan?
Yep.
Very large project.
Yep.
I don't think that's reasonable to ask for a 10-year plan for Tiers 1 and 2. So what would be the expectation for Tier 1?
Good question.
Yeah, that would certainly be part of our planning. I think it's important for the community to know what type of projects that we have coming up. You know, we've talked at great length since I've been here about a public works, public safety facility. So, you know, I think that we should put placeholders in out-years for those large items. We've talked about roads. Yeah, our plan would be to, you know, we may not have the most accurate numbers, because really, it becomes a little bit of a guesstimate at that point. But we should be targeting those, that large project that we need to take into consideration in future years.
Right, but we're expecting a 10-year plan in Tier 3.
That was on my third slide. It's certainly a 10-year plan was something that we're going to be going forward. That's what we did this past year, although we only showed 5. We talked about 5, but we had 10.
Okay. And we're going to stick to the same definition as the capital planning task force of a very large project, which was, I believe, by a million or more sequenced over...
No.
I think those are the tier dollars that we were just reviewing, correct?
So a project over $2.5 million even if it's sequenced? That just seems, you know what I'm saying?
So your concern about sequences, multiple phases, so a project over three years is what you're alluding to, and I think the answer is yeah, still, 2.5 million.
And then I'm just going to put in a bid to begin to talk about planning for electrification, because we, I think as a town, we've been... because we, I think as a town, we've been, last time, we made a commitment to reduce our emissions by 50% in 2024, which is very close to coming right up. So that would be within that budget. But I don't think we have an electrification plan in the town buildings or school buildings. And this is what ACT has done. And I just would like begging that we begin the process of at least getting consultant or finding grants, which is what ACT did, to hire consultants. We have a clear picture of the electrification process for the versus planning on doing the last whole infrastructure that I don't think is true in the town.
I have a couple of questions for Andrew.
I'm good.
I first just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Hunter and Bob and Kerry and Anthony for, just echoing what everyone has already said, for coming together. I think this kind of collaboration is really awesome to see. And I'm really excited at the prospect of having a process that we can all agree to follow by-bye, because it feels like then we're talking the same language when we're speaking about capital projects. And in the past years, we've almost been speaking different languages. So, thank you, I really appreciate that, and I think this has been great. Thanks for the participation.
You're welcome.
My couple of questions. One is, well, first a comment on the capital, on the planning task force. I really appreciate that we actually, that you started this under the framing of that. I think that was really great. Obviously Cynthia and many others put a lot of work into that and had some really good insights into how we should be thinking about this. And so this really focused on, I appreciated that this really focused on the tiers. And second, on that piece, given that the task force plan was like a 10-year plan, and this is an adjustment, it's the, my question is, is this like a one-year pilot of this new process? Or do we revisit this at the end of next year to say what worked, what didn't? How do we kind of think about where we are, what happens with this a year from now?
So, yes, so we did, we did talk about that as a group, and we did say after this year, we really have to sit down and evaluate how it went. Because, you know, this is something that we consider a work in progress, and that there'll be tweaks along the road, along the line. So, yes, we're going to be looking at this after and evaluating and talk about it, and then maybe come up with some additional recommendations next year for the following year.
I mean, I actually think, because we're going to keep meeting with each other as we actually get to the projects, we're going to know where the stumbling parts are. I think because it's going to be iterative, it's not going to be this big summative thing at the end where we go, oh, that didn't work, because for, you know, for improvement's sake, we're going to sit together throughout, which to me says it's going to pop right up at us and go, oh, that little bit right there isn't really working as cleanly as we would have thought.
And then I guess my follow-up question is, and I don't know if there's an answer to this at this time, but like, how does this affect guidelines for this year? Because we're still, there's a little bit of this gray area. So what happens with the guideline for this year?
I think that's a question for, Eric, do you want to field that one?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, well, I mean, the good news is it's still early in the process, and we have some additional time this year, because town meeting is so late. It will have an effect. We'll look at this year as a transition year, in a sense, to make things consistent between the town and the schools. So I think that, I think that's all, I'll say, it's going to have an effect. We'll have to talk through it, but fortunately, it's still early.
I just had one question, I guess. It sounds like we're all obviously very excited with the collaboration, and that tiers make logical sense. I don't have a lot of feedback on that. Between now and November, is there anything that you all need from any of us as a full committee? Any support, any questions that we, what can we do to help?
You know, I know what the schools are going to need to do. We're going to need to meet with each committee. We have a facility study at CPS that is hot off the press, that needs to, you know, really be vetted. And I think the region's going to have to talk about what its lists might be right now. And that will inform the conversations we bring to, you know, work with Kerry and Anthony, and then eventually propose to all of you. So that feedback, I assume is the same for Kerry on the select board?
Yeah, I mean, I know we will be meeting more than we have in the past with the select board to talk through capital, because we for sure will have tier-three capital. We're expecting a tier-three request for public works infrastructure, which would be roads, et cetera. And we would expect to be plugging in our two big building projects somewhere, somehow in the 10-year horizon. So we will be, we are looking forward to having discussions in October with the select board so that we're ready for November.
Thank you. Can I clarify something? Back to your question, Kerry, about the guideline, how does this impact the guideline? If I'm looking at the slide here, it looks like the only change that's being proposed tonight is that tier one, which the town used to include in the guideline, will now be outside of the guideline. And for the schools, there'll be no change, because it was always outside of the guideline. Is that correct?
With the caveat of how we handle the school buses and the extensive laptop purchases that we make.
Okay.
But I think those are the two big buckets.
Yeah, those, great, okay, right?
I think so.
Okay, good, okay. Is the school committee done with their questioning? Or do you have more questions, Julie?
Yeah, we're all set. Oh, Brian, yeah, Brian joined remotely, but we're good.
Okay, Eric, do you want to open it up to the FinCom?
We've got a lot of FinComs.
Okay, finally, yeah, there's 15 of us, and we're kind of scattered around the room. So why don't we start on this side? If folks have questions, just raise your hand. Dee?
My question is really pretty basic. What is the expectation of the, that you will be bringing forward at the November? What is it, November 18th meeting? And also, do you have an expectation for the December 16th meeting in terms of content?
So, yeah, Dee, the November 18th meeting, like I mentioned, would just be all the capital projects that have been submitted that are unvetted. So those are really ones that haven't gone through the diligence of seeing if, what we are going to prioritize and what we're not. So that's just the rough, raw data on November. In December, in that 30 days, less than 30 days, we'll be hot at work to whittle that down, to present a plan that, that is, it aligns with the policy that was outlined tonight.
Okay, so I guess my follow-up question would be, are these reasonable expectations? Do you really, you know, it's a lot of work that you're undertaking, and I'm just wondering if these, if this timeframe is reasonable?
We've discussed it. I think it is. I think it is.
Okay.
I think it is. Fortunately, we do have some extra time with town meeting, as Eric said. So that's why we looked at this, and we think we can make those dates.
Okay, so then my last question would be, is there anything from the finance committee's standpoint or perspective that we can assist with, or assist on, or help you with, or not?
Patience, patience with this, as we go through this, that's all.
Good answer.
Well, if there is, call Eric.
Okay, thank you, Dee.
Sure.
Others, Shree back there? Greg?
Greg.
Just a question on the, so the output is going to be an article at town meeting for...
For the capital, one capital, oh, article.
Is there going to be a second output of a timeline of when we want to sequence the bigger projects? Or is that something else?
You know, that would certainly be identified in our plan. You know, we're, we're working on a new budget document. We have a software program called ClairGov that we're going to be coming in. It's going to be all transparent to the website. So at any point in time, people can go in and really drill down and look at those projects. So you'll know what's, what's, the town's facing in the future years.
Dawn?
Hi, yeah, I have a few questions. At first, I felt to see all of this. I think we need a common definition of what is a capitalizable item and what is not capitalizable, so that we're all on the same page. I've always used the rule that it has to have a useful life of at least two years to be capitalizable at all. But something like a laptop or, you know, usually is expense, but that's, so that may be outside of those strict definitions of dollars. And I think that becomes really important when we get into tiers two and three, because if we're funding things with debt that have a useful life that's shorter than the debt, we're actually just pushing that cost onto future citizens. So we need to tie in the useful life to the debt, the duration of the debt. So that makes it a little bit deeper definition of capital. And then next is those that we're not paying for with debt, the operating budget and the cash items. If cash is outside of guidelines, where is the money coming from, and what's the control?
It's, it's a good question. So the, it doesn't change as far as the amount of money that it's, that's allocated with the policy, with the 3%. It's just a matter of there'll be perhaps a little bit more of a push on the levy, which we'll take into consideration, because it's, it's additional dollars that normally would have been inside the levy. So we're going outside a little bit, but...
So does that mean then that FinCom should assume that some $3 or $5 million will be coming out of our taxes before we get to guideline spending?
It's all within the levy. The plan is still with, all within the levy. So we're going to make it work within the levy, within the guidelines that you set.
No, I appreciate that, but would, it would be, I guess, what we would otherwise think of as free cash, right? Because, yeah, spending, it's just something I need to wrap my head around and make, I'm not yet comfortable with that thought, that we're spending up to $250,000, but it's outside of, yeah, out of this year's budget, but it's outside of the guidelines.
And that's why we have a slide in there, Dawn, that really talks about a future free cash policy that maybe identifies some one-time cash that is not pushing up against your tax bill.
So if we then, free cash is at 5.01%, that would mean then no tier two?
Not necessarily with this.
I guess I'd...
We'd have to talk through it.
Maybe $10,000 is too low, too high, too low of a threshold for the, for the operating budget, and maybe that should be $50,000 or something, you know, to capture a little bit more. And that's it.
Yeah, we just wanted to identify those expenses that we really pick up on our operating budget that are really capital, and, you know, go back to the example of the buses, right? That's really a capital item. But that's something that the school has absorbed within their operating budget.
Right, sure, I understand that. I'm thinking of other examples, but also on the buses, if the payment's $250,000 a year, we don't want to be funding that with debt, right? For the leasing, yeah. So it's a more complicated definition.
There could be years where we don't have the money, that we just, you know, that we're not going to the 3%, we're saying we can only do 1.5% because we're really pushing it. It's really going to depend every year, year by year.
Well, I appreciate that the capital leases haven't been figured out yet, how that's going to be accounted for. But I think that's probably the bulk of it, and I just want to make sure they don't end up being included in tier two and three where we have...
Dawn, I think Kerry has something to say.
Yeah, I, just something that maybe will help clarify, and Bob actually said it earlier. I think you can think about it as a 3% guideline for cash capital. And right now, we have 2% more or less that's baked into the guideline. So it would be a plus 1% that would be offset somewhat by debt service pay, a reduction in debt service payments.
Okay.
If that's, if that's at all.
Essentially, the shift is the school capital tier, it was all in tier two, and that's, some of that's shifting to tier one, which will be paid for by cash. There's a tax impact to paying for that cash instead of borrowing it. But that's a limited dollar amount. It's $400,000 this past year, and not all of it, some of the $900 in the future will end up being tier two. So I think there is a little bit of a transition this year, but once it's, once it transitions, there's no bumpiness going forward.
So there's some arithmetic that needs to be done to try to figure out what the proposed funding percentages are. And I assume that it's going to be tricky this year, because establishing what that budget was retrospectively is going to be difficult. But then in future years, once this is rolling, we're talking about a percentage of the prior year's budget allocation, so that that should be straightforward, and everybody knows what number they're working to. And there was some flexibility between the use of tier-one cash and tier-two, depending on the needs, if there's a lot more of one type of project than another, that aiming towards this 7% to 8% of total budget for the capital plan for both, for both entities, the town and the school.
The way I think of it, which might be helpful to someone else in the room, is we always had a cap, a policy of 2% to 3% for cash capital, and then 4% to 5% for debt capital. And we've always had that policy. And now what we're doing is we're looking at folding in the school into that. And one of the reasons we want to do that is we want to make sure that we continue to spend the money we need to spend to keep our assets refreshed. Okay, so that's one of the big positives here. We're really not, and those amounts, those 3% and 4%, were always outside of guideline. And then you determined your guideline based on, okay, if we know we're going to be spending 7% to 8% on capital, what's left over for guideline? I sound like, I look like Trump, I can't believe it. I'm not doing, but, so in other words, this is no change to the policy we've always had. It's really just folding it all together so that we make sure that we're spending the money on assets and keeping them refreshed. That's how I look at it.
Okay, Melissa, Colin? Anyone down that end? Good, okay. One, one question I had to close out the finance committee questions. Are we in sync that the end goal of this, we're starting with the process, which I think we all agree is the right place to start. Are we in sync that the end goal of this, bigger picture, is a unified capital plan?
Yes.
That prioritizes all of the needs across both the town and the schools with either cost estimates, dollars, or placeholders for every single one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I think, keeping in mind Cynthia's point, which was a good one, which is the definition of capital needs that need to be served. Things like achieving electrification of buildings need to be folded into that capital planning process. And ideally, we would be using the same sets of principles and goals across that, because after all, you know, from 1,000 feet in the air, a building is a building, and a road is a road. So you have to kind of apply the same criteria to adjusting for capital needs.
Okay, before we move on to the next topic, in the interest of time, I'd like to close this out with getting a sense of the select board, whether we support the policy that was proposed to us. I don't think we need a formal motion, but I'd just like to go around and see if people support what's been proposed so far.
I certainly do. I think there's a, one, it will be challenging in the guideline for you, for the finance committee, to sort of figure out what's, how to sort of go back and say from last year to this year, what the guideline is. So there's some background work that will have to happen there, too. But yes.
Are we all okay?
Yeah, I feel, I think it's great work. I feel really good about the way it's been presented. And so I feel good about these guidelines. And I think I was trying to pull on the same thread that I think Dawn was pulling on, which is just, when you are faced with tough choices, how are we going to make those tough choices? And if you start to say, hey, wait a second, here's something that's going to slip me below the free cash balance, or here's something that's going to bump that out-of-guideline spend up, what's the process so we don't wake up and go, oops, it turns out we spent this or did that, and we didn't, not that intentional, but you know what I mean? Just sort of like, hey, let's just do it with sort of forethought and purpose.
Okay.
So I'm very much in support, and I was on the capital planning task force with Cynthia and Dr. Hunter and Kerry years ago. And I think this is a really good modification. I'm really happy to see it. And Eric, you have it exactly right. We want to have one integrated capital plan that everyone supports.
I think it's progress, too. I pick up on Kerry's point. I think it's important that the same definitions are being used by the different budgeting entities, so that when we're talking about a tier-one project, we know what kind of things we're... project, we know what kind of things we're talking about, and that those are analogous across the various budgeting entities. I think that makes it helpful for everyone.
And I too support it, because I do think that we will have a process to make sure that we do stay within the 3% guideline for cash, the 4% guideline for debt service for Tier 2, debt, Tier 3 we know goes to town meeting on its own merits, and then we've got the guideline process for the operating budget. So I, I think, um, I think we've got a process, but we're not going to, because of this, we're not all of a sudden gonna tip over and spend money without paying attention. We're gonna be paying attention. Uh, November 18th we will, and then December, we will finalize what we think, within those guidelines, as Bob said. So we have different guidelines. Um, okay, Carrie, do you wanna get a sense of the School Committee, how they feel about it?
I think we can talk about it tomorrow.
Let us know. And FinCom, you wanna get back?
Yeah, we're, we're actually meeting right after this, and we're gonna debrief on this conversation, and, um, as Dawn said, I mean, I think we just collectively wanna think through the implications of this. It is the Finance Committee that sets the guideline, so it is our responsibility.
Okay.
I think, um, we may, as a committee, have some input.
Yes.
Maybe it is that we'd like to see, in your November 2 presentation, in terms of some of the definitions that have been mentioned, and some of the specificity, we'd like to see. So I think most of, I, my questions, the reason I didn't ask any are not about what's in this presentation, but things that I'd like to see in the next iteration, and the time to look at that as, not really speaking.
Okay. Can you get that to us soon, so that the budgeting entities can have it in time to incorporate into the November 18th? Great, good, thank you.
And just a quick question, would this modify the letters, the content of the letters you could send us regarding? Yeah, I would think so.
I don't, I don't think so.
Really?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think, we're, we're gonna talk about those after this, too. We'll talk through it.
Okay. You got some talk, talkin' to do. Okay. Okay, let's move on to the disposition of the PBD school side, if you would, Anthony.
Great, absolutely, and I, and it's sake, for the interest of time, I know I can go through this quickly. Andrea, if you can pull it up for me, thank you.
Okay, so one of the things that we, you know, wanted to bring to your attention, too, is that, um, you know, in talking about capital, you know, we have a building, the PBD Middle School, that at some point during this calendar year, next calendar year, uh, calendar 25, early in the spring, um, that, that building will be turned over to the town. And the next slide, the three of the items, uh, thank you, just discussion items for tonight, is how do we go about doing that, and what do we have to take into consideration, and what could we do, um, you know, with that property? So you got the transfer of property, mothballing the building, and then request for letters of interest. Next slide, please. So with the transfer of property, um, anytime a property like, like in this situation is gonna be transferred, it has to be discussed in a public meeting, which I believe that you've done, um, while talking about the middle school construction process, so I know that that happened, and then there's a, um, there's a, a law, master of law, that we have to, um, do a transfer of ownership of that building. So right now, that building sits in the care, custody, and control of the School Committee, so that needs to be, uh, transferred to the care, custody, and control of the Select Board. How that happens is at town meeting. At town meeting, we will do a warrant article where that, um, that will happen at town meeting, the transfer, obviously, the School Committee will do their part, and we'll work with town council to, on the technicalities of it, but this would have to happen so the Select Board can have, uh, control of that building to do whatever it is the town wants to do with that building. But a couple of things to consider, next slide, is once that building's empty, you know, right now, we have to think about mothballing the building. We have no, no anticipated use right now, or it hasn't been decided, uh, but that building will have to be what they call mothballing, and I just identified some of the items that you have to take into consideration with mothballing a building. Why do I bring it up? Because there's a cost associated with every single, everything that we do, whether we're sitting with an empty building or not, you know, we have to, we have to get that building, safeguard that building, because buildings deteriorate real fast when people aren't in those buildings. So, um, I just wanna bring this to your attention, that we will have some additional costs, not, not, not to mention insuring a vacant building is something that the insurance companies really are not excited about, um, and who knows, they, they, you know, we'll have to have our conversation with our insurance company, because that's something where sometimes they, they tend not to wanna do, um, and we'd have to look at somebody else to do it. But we're not there yet, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, next slide, so at, what the Select Board could do, um, and really, we could do this as soon as, you know, later in this calendar year, is do what's called a request for letters of interest for that building. And all that does is, it's, it's, and it was in your package, I put together a form letter for you, or, or, or an example RLI, um, that you, you issued to developers and anybody interested in the property, and then they'll come back and they'll give you what they have for ideas for that property. Um, I have experience doing that, in my last community, we were considering, uh, a new town hall, in our existing town hall, one of the priorities that was outlined in the community was senior affordable housing, so we put together a quest for information and, um, which is very similar to an RLI, but, uh, so what we did is we wanted to take a temperature of what's out there, and what people were doing, and surprisingly, we, you know, but not surprisingly, we got four respondents that had some ideas. So, that doesn't commit the town to anything, but it helps to define the next process. So if it is, the town determines that there's a surplus property and you wanna consider selling this, especially with the big projects that you're coming up, and putting that money aside, which, you know, that money can only fund debt for future projects, um, this is something that can help define if we, if you do wanna sell it, what an RFP might look like, to really make targeted towards, uh, what the best plan that you saw out there. So that's what a request for letters of interest, uh, can do. And the next slide, I, I kinda just went through it, um, but again, it just expresses interest, it just gets your preliminary, uh, v- information, and then it gets, allows you to evaluate some of the options to determine what your next, uh, course of action will be with that property. So that's really all I had with this. It, it's something where I, I felt that it's important for the town to start considering that, and, and not just leave it as a vacant building, but really plan for, um, whatever you choose to do with that, and those are just one option.
Thank, thank you, Anthony. So if I, if I summarize this, basically, you're saying, the building is going to be vacant, when will it be vacant? The end of...
March, April.
Really? March, April, FY '25 will be vacant, then?
Maybe earlier.
Wow, okay.
Maybe earlier, beautiful.
Okay.
Well, we're incorporating all, we're, we're planning on emptying both buildings at the same time, because the scope of movers and transition, transit and all of that is better that way.
Okay, and you're suggesting that, um, since the School Committee owns it, but we will eventually, the Select Board, that we find out what interest there is for it, to inform our decision?
Yes.
And it's not too early to do that?
Not too early at all.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I do have one. So you're talking about the building, um, there is the field that's currently accompanied with it, would that be included in the RFI? I mean, I know that we love our fields, and we always wanna keep our fields, but in terms of optimizing the value, is that a consideration? I, I just don't know what you were thinking about.
Uh, so, I'm not necessarily thinking about anything, but I think what you...
Yeah, but it's just a question.
I think, I think what you do is you leave it as is. You know, we define what the parcel is on that, and just throw everything out there, you know, and include the field, you know, and just see what somebody might come back with. That doesn't mean that, you know, you still could carve out, you know, whatever you wanted to, but this'll help, it helps that decision-making process.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah. Sure there'd be a grievance on that.
Who's bringing, uh, who's carrying the budget line item for the maintenance of the mothballed building in the next budget year?
That's probably gonna be a capital item that we'll have to incorporate. You know, we may have some money within the, our existing facilities account to do some of the basic work to secure the property, but there's certainly money that's gonna have to be allocated to that.
So, in terms of a handoff, what we're expecting is the school is gonna continue to maintain the building in whatever condition through the end of this fiscal year, and then at the, on July 1, we would expect that the town will begin to pay the bills. Is that...
I don't, I don't believe the school, and I, I, well, I don't believe the school budgeted for that, that building, Bob, right after March, or?
Um, yes.
We budgeted to phase, phase out at the end of March.
Yeah, we're gonna run from that building. We weren't planning on maintaining it once we leave, Mark.
Maybe I'll ask the question a different way, did the town budget to maintain a building starting in March?
Probably not to the level...
No, no.
Okay.
But it doesn't transfer until town meeting?
Right, right.
Correct.
So the school owns it until town meeting?
Correct.
So we have some work to do.
Well, so let's just name, we didn't budget either, because we thought we'd be transitioning over, and we are carrying costs of the new school already, too, so we were already trying to cover other bases.
So just...
Are you saving, aren't you saving some money in the new school, when you consolidate, though? Won't there be some money available?
In '26, FY '25 is running three buildings and all the needs that come with that.
So I think that, you know, that's just one sort of minor point on, on planning for the decommissioning of the school. Um, I think it's also important to, to pick up on what Wendy was just talking about, which is, if there are expectations, programmatic expectations for the use of the property in any way, shape, or form, the PBD property, it's actually, what we think of as a PBD parcel is actually two parcels, if you look at it.
Right, that's what I was asking.
Um, one of them is fields, and the other is the building, and so I think we just need to get accurate and specific about it if we're gonna do anything, whether it be, you know, RLI or, or something else, we should understand the scope, and we should understand the, what, what the School Department may have in mind, or, you know, frankly, others around town might have in mind for uses.
And it's a heavily utilized field, we would, we would, we will and have been using it until the field and kind are over on the new prop, you know, when sand warms down, so...
Right.
We would have interest in maintaining school programs there, and certainly, there's a lot of youth programs out there, too.
Which kind of brings up the, the sort of attractive nuisance element of, do we anticipate needing to put up a fence around the building or something like that? Is that, um, and who's planning that?
Good question. That, that's all gonna have to be in the planning process and discussions for that property. So we'll be working with facilities and with the schools to determine what we need to, to button up that property.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Select Board?
Yeah, just, just picking up on it. So if we're gonna do a, um, an RFI or RLI, um, I think it is just making sure we, I mean, I would like to see, okay, give me your interest if it was just this piece of land. Give me your interest if it was both pieces of land, but just being very clear, like, it could be one, it could be both, we don't know, but just tell us what you think, right? Hey, give us your interest if it's this allowed zone, and give us your interest if it's a diff, you know, just, but be, let's be clear and specify so that we get back something that says, okay, under these parameters or these options, here's what we have as potential interest.
Yeah, great, that's a great point, Kim, and that's something that I would propose, you know, I, I would imagine that we come back to the Select Board before we even considered issuing that, to talk through the logistics of what we, how that wanna shape that RLI.
Good.
This was just an example in, in your packet, it's not ready for primetime.
Yeah, for sure.
Eric, do you wanna open it up to the FinCom for questions?
Any questions from FinCom? Kathy?
Um, can you give us an estimate of what you think the fair market value of the two parcels are?
So I can tell you the assessed value for the PBD school is between 15 and 17 million dollars. Does that mean we're gonna get 15 and 17 million dollars? Probably not. Um, that's with that current building. I would imagine, unless somebody was to have a reuse of that building, that, that would factor into the dollar amount, uh, so it, you know, really depends, I, I don't wanna say, I really don't know, I really don't know.
Do you know what the, um, rate for the acreage is?
Um, not off the top of my head, but I think I had the field card in there, and it should be on that field card, the assessors' field card, the acreage and the square footage of the building, so that's, should be in your packet. But I don't know it off the top of my head, I don't have that in front of me.
No, I don't think it is.
Dawn?
Uh, yeah, there's a saying that good things don't happen in vacant buildings, and, uh, so we, we, we wanna act fast, I think, on this, and to, and see the building come down. So with that in mind, I was gonna suggest that we put together a timeline for the process, uh, so that we can have a plan to bring to town meeting, um, this coming year.
Good, good point.
And, um, and toward that end, a couple of questions would be about, one, about zoning, the two is, uh, Phase 1 environmental report, which is usually, people wanna see that if they're gonna look at the site, and third is, uh, is there septic field, or could we get, get that and include that in the, in, in the letter? And if we could get this off our hands, you know, after town meeting, that'd be awesome, that'd be awesome.
Colin?
I'm gonna follow up on what Dawn just said, is septic field, is there a leach field that's associated with this property on Powder Mill Road? That's the first question, because I thought there was a two-acre tract of land that was associated with this. And the second thing is, on the, uh, letter of interest form itself, there's a blank line, and I have a feeling that blank line is where you're supposed to put the purpose for what you're looking, people to say, how you're going to use the property. Are you going to be specifying the types of purposes that can be used on the property in the RL, uh, letter of interest?
So, it, to answer your first question, I don't know what leaching field, I don't know what the infrastructure behind there, I don't know what that building's, how it's supported, if it's on our sewer, I, I don't know any of those answers, but we would, by the time, um, we're issuing this, uh, we, we would have those answers. Um, and the second part of your question, um, dealt with what again, Colin, just?
It was about, um, the blank line on the letter of interest itself.
Oh, yeah, the blank line, so, so that, that line is, um, it's left blank on purpose, it's for, when the Select Board has this for a future item, that they can determine if, do they wanna say, you know, it's important, affordable housing, it's all, although you wanna just leave it generic, and really just take the temperature, which, which might be, not even to take into consideration zoning, we did look at the zoning, it's residential, but even with this, maybe you just leave it just as blank. That's something the Select Board can talk about before they issue it and determine how they wanna go, and what direction.
Any other FinCom questions? Good.
Carrie?
Do you have any questions? Yep. So, so there is, so the parcel for the septic is at 68B Powder Mill, um, which is a good ways away from the property which is coming here.
Okay.
And then there's another property at 7B Opel Card, which is close to the field, but I wonder if that's where the septic, septic is going through, so...
Okay.
Um, somebody should get to the bottom of this.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, yeah, leave people.
Mary, can I just follow up on, um, Dawn's point?
Sure.
I do agree, on the one hand, it would be really great to go to town meeting with the timeframe and a plan for this building. On the other hand, um, Select Board has talked a little bit about, um, a land use plan, because we're also looking at MCI, we're looking at 2229 Main Street, um, so I'm not sure how we proceed quickly on one building, um, or whether we should do something overall. And I don't know the answer to that, but we need to discuss it.
Okay.
But at a minimum, we know at town meeting, we're gonna have a warrant to take over.
We are, we're, we're gonna take ownership, and, and I think Dawn is suggesting we have more information to lay out.
Absolutely.
Okay, and you're saying we might not be ready. Okay. Anything, Carrie?
I can't comment on this.
Julie? You're all set?
I'm all set.
Great. Okay. Okay, I think we're good.
We're ready to adjourn the joint meeting?
We are ready to adjourn the joint meeting, or only...
Will we go to free cash? Are we ready to adjourn?
Yeah, it was, it was, we didn't really take a sense of the board. Uh, thank you very much for everybody to be here, motion to adjourn the joint meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Can I just, um, housekeeping item, the Finance Committee, we're gonna meet separately in the usual spot, the Select, Select Board hearing room. We'll meet in a minute.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Oh, yeah, it's the American transition, too.[1782.13]
I was gonna say, well, I said Wendy brought up a great, a great thing about the buses and I brought up the thing about what if you aggregate those things so they jump out of the guide? So they need to think about that. Yeah, they do. No, November. 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 Eric's gonna give us his input. Oh, I didn't ask them. Okay, let's go. That would help. Okay, thank you very much. We're moving on to the Select Board meeting. It is. It is 7:14. I'm calling the August 19th, 2024 Select Board meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes and it's for things that are not on the agenda. So do I have any public comment?
I don't see any in the room.
I do. Mr. Herchak?
Ready?
We are.
Yeah, so Andrew Herchak, member of actually a couple of different committees, but just speaking as a, a citizen tonight. I just wanted to very politely echo some of the comments you guys have been getting over the last few meetings regarding the RTE. You know, my taxes went up quite a bit this year, it was a huge gut punch to my family. We weren't expecting it. Frankly, I don't really understand it and I really know nothing about it besides, besides my tax bill. So again, very respectfully, would just urge you to put together some sort of subcommittee to study it. I think you have data now from our town, we have data from other towns. I simply would just like to understand it and the, and the plan forward and see if it's working towards your goals or not. So any information you have for that going forward, I would really appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herchak. Anyone else? That's a good idea. Mr. Herchak, we are having a hearing on September 30th. You're aware of that?
No.
Okay, okay. We are having a hearing on September 30th to present to the town the data that we have collected so far, having one year's experience with the RTE. So I know people have been asking for a task force based on data. We're in the process of collecting that data. We will have one year that we will present on September 30th. And then if you want information about your particular tax bill and why it went up, I think that would be instructive for you to, to really understand what were the factors and you could call the assessor's office and they would work, help you work through that. And most of the people who have come to us or to the assessors to find out or to explore why their tax bill has gone up, the RTE has actually been the least, the, the smallest impact to their tax bill. So other factors such as increases in valuation, increased spending, increased debt service for the middle school, those have been the factors that have had the most impact on the increase in the tax bill and the RTE has pretty consistently been the lowest factor. So you might wanna learn more about your specific property. And September 30th, don't forget September 30th. Any other, any other feedback? Any other questions? Okay. Good, we can make up, make up the flight time as they say. Okay. First thing on our agenda is to hear from Simone Monteleone. Simone, you wanna come up? No, it's your preference.
Plenty to choose from tonight.
Too many options tonight. Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and provide an update on our Great American Outdoors Act project, in particular, the work that is going to be happening at North Bridge. So when I came to you earlier this summer, at that time, construction was set to begin sometime in mid-August. Obviously, we are in mid-August now. So I notified both Ms. Hartman as well as Ms. LaFleur about a change in our project schedule. So our closure is for the North Bridge area is gonna start on September 3rd, so the day after Labor Day. At the time, when I had presented to you earlier this summer, we were looking at the opportunity to do one side at a time, but due to a delay in another part of the project that not in the North Bridge unit, we're going to have to close both sides of the project, of the bridge, excuse me, to make sure that we complete our project on time. So the closure will be both sides of the bridge from the Monument Street parking area up through past the Miniman statue, up to the crest of the hill. So this will allow materials to be brought on each side of the bridge to make the rehabilitation for the trail itself. The bridge, if you remember, the bridge itself is not having any construction work to it, but it's both sides of the trail that are. So during this time, there will be no public access to the bridge, to the Miniman statue, to the obelisk, and to the British Grave. We are going to be encouraging our visitors to come to the top part of the North Bridge unit at the North Bridge Visitor Center and to view the bridge from the Sunken Garden in the Butcher Gardens. So there's a scenic overlook there, which has a beautiful view of the bridge as well as the two monuments. So there will be some impacts to the Monument Street parking lot for staging of materials. We will be providing access to the Robbins House as well as some parking spaces to maintain access to that historic site.
Very good. Any questions?
I guess the, the only question I have is, and I don't know, maybe on our website, because we have tourists are gonna be there, right? So I don't know if they're all gonna go to the, to the park for information and we might wanna put a message up on our website if people are interested.
I think we have something up.
Because there'll be no access, right?
We have something up on our website. We do.
Yes, we've met with Beth Williams from the Tourism Office for the town to making sure that she was aware, because we know she is in very close contact with many of the bus tours that come through from the park, as well as some that just show up neither the park nor the town knows about. Because the bus parking lot will be shifted up to the Liberty Street parking area because the way that the Monument Street parking is, the bus parking is the closest to the bridge and that's gonna be where a lot of the staging and the material is going to be. So there'll be no bus parking at Monument Street. So Beth Williams is aware of that. We also spoke to the tourism folks from the town of Lexington as well, because their Liberty ride comes through and stops at that side of the park.
And approximately, how long will it be closed?
Eight weeks. So.
The whole fall leaf season?
Yes. Unfortunately, it'll be both September and October. But again, the, the goal is to making sure all work is done by the end of the calendar year, so we are ready to go for the 250th in April.
So there's that path just south of the main path behind the Mans that kind of goes out over the river. Do you, do you anticipate that that's still open or is that only just easier?
So, so that particular path that actually leads over to the bridge, we will put the barricade up to, so those that are on the Old Mans property can't then transition over to within the park. But that trail that's on the Old Mans' property, that we wouldn't be doing any work there, that's the Old Mans.
But that's likely to end up absorbing everybody who finds themselves on that side?
Yes, and that particular side of the Old Mans, there's a sort of a crest, so it's actually a nice spot to view the bridge. So I anticipate that there'll probably be an increase in visitation at the Old Mans for, for viewing on that side.
Kim, are you okay?
Yeah, I think it's gr, you know, thank you for sharing. Someone's gonna show up and not know that the park's closed, right? No matter how hard we try, so I just encourage us to keep thinking about, what are all the avenues that people sort of learn about or what big signs can we put up? Because it's gonna happen, right? Somebody's gonna go, wait a second, I'm here and...
Yes, and we've asked both Beth Williams as well as the Tourism Office at the Town of Lexington to help amplify our message. So obviously, we have it on the website, social media, we'll be doing signage in the park itself. We've also put out a press release, so we'll be pressing our partners in, in the press to help us elevate that information. But yes, you are absolutely correct. More often than not, we do get folks that just come and they haven't necessarily seen those messages until they show up.
Simone, has anything changed with the scope of work?
No.
Okay, so it's just how it's going to be staged and when it's gonna happen?
Correct.
Can you remind me, is the restroom included in these renovations in these?
No, so there's no work being done on the restrooms themselves, the one that's there along Monument Street. So we're gonna try to maintain access to that for visitors. If we're finding that there is too many conflicts between the moving of materials and equipment and the public, we might close it, but our goal is to keep it open for the full eight weeks. And obviously, the restroom up at the North Bridge Visitor Center will be accessible. So that's open seven days a week.
Carrie, are we gonna open our restrooms during these months so that people can use the one downstairs? I remember we talked about that.
Yeah, so we are working through the logistics of being able to keep the first floor or the, the entryway of, of this building open for access when, when we are not open. We are, we are still working through that. We don't have everything figured out just yet. We are not able to, the front doors, we're not able to open and close remotely, so that's, that's one of the issues. And then we don't, we don't yet have that area completely secured, so we're working through that.
That would be, that would be a big help, because as, as we've heard, those are busy months and having those restrooms, they are out of commission. I mean, I can imagine the bu, the work is gonna interfere with the use of those, so that would be a big help.
Yeah, so I, I don't think there's a chance that the town hall restrooms would be open to the public outside of business hours that soon, but the visitor center restrooms are available.
Oh.
Yeah. Right.
Oh, so when were we thinking of having the town restrooms open? Remind me.
Well, I think as soon as, as soon as feasible.
Okay.
But the, the issue, the big issue is the front doors.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
What, what's the schedule for the work?
So it'll, my project manager is telling me a full eight weeks, so that is a worst-case scenario. Obviously, if all the stars align, maybe they can finish a little sooner, but I'd rather tell you the worst.
Is that Monday through Friday or?
Monday through Friday, correct.
So during the time when active work is not going on, we could expect that the restrooms in the parking area might be a little bit more available to visitors or will it be sort of barricaded on?
So in the parking lot where the staging area will be, that would be closed even on the days that they're not working because there'll be trail material and other, other things physically in that location as it relates to the restrooms. Again, as long as we're not seeing a safety issue in terms of conflict with visitors and the moving of equipment, we're gonna try to maintain that as accessible. If there is any change, I will relay that to the town. But I know, especially in speaking with Beth Williams, that, you know, if we can keep those open, that would be very helpful. And again, the North Bridge Visitor Center, which is just at the top of the hill, we're open seven days a week, so that will be accessible for visitors.
Great. Okay. Great, thank you for coming and updating us. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to take off of the consent agenda?
I don't have anything to, to change. I have one edit.
To the minutes?
To the minutes, yes.
Okay, so you wanna take the minutes off? Okay.
No, I don't, I don't, well, yeah, I guess that's, you'd have to do. I just have a correction.
Okay, that's good.
It's minor.
Anything else that we wanna take off? This reappointment of Hillary Taylor under D, that should be under the Select Board Appointments.
Yes.
Which one is that?
It's D3.
So this reappointment should?
Should be under Appointments, not, yeah, exactly.
So we have to take that off of the consent?
Right, we take that off the consent agenda and move it down when you read the appointments, Mark.
Yes.
Okay. But I do have some edits on the minutes, so I'd like to take the minutes off. So I'll start with you, Wendy. What, what edit would you like to see?
Well, before you do that, I, I sent in some edits to Andrea.
Yeah.
So.
Are they on here?
On the agenda? They're not on here because I, this came out on Friday, right? The, the update isn't, is on the website now or the old one?
Okay, can I make a proposal that we send each individually? I have a few edits. Terry, you've already sent yours. You can send yours.
I've already sent them.
You've already sent them. I didn't send them, I will send them and then we can approve these at our next meeting.
Great.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna move that we approve the consent agenda without Item A, the meeting minutes of August 5th, 2024.
Yep.
Or Item D dot three, the reappointment of Hillary Taylor.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
That's okay. It's a, it's different on my motions from here, that's fine.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. Okay, now, you want your Select Board appointees.
Yes, move we reappoint Hillary Taylor of 621 West Street, Carla. To the Cultural, to the Concord Cultural Council for a term to expire May 31st with an APP 10, Section 7, Item G, exception.
So sorry, is that an exception because she lived in Carla?
Yes.
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 Okay. And is that somebody, sorry, reappointments here, so she was on?
Yes.
She's moved, is that what happened?
No. No, she, well, she might have moved someday, but I think she's lived, she's been on the Cultural Council while she was a resident of Carla.
So the APP 10 allows for, under certain circumstances, usually a skills or a particular capability for us to appoint somebody to a, to a town committee that doesn't live in Concord.
Do we, do we, I'm just curious, I don't know. Just, do we know why we need somebody from Carla? This is sort of my...
We don't need somebody from Carla, but we do want Hillary. We want Hillary because she's been an active member of the artist community for quite a while.
Gotcha.
So we, we feel, the committee feels, I don't, they, the council feels that she's a, you know, a valuable contributor.
Valuable asset and.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Skills, et cetera. Okay. Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Okay.
Do we wanna vote that?
No, let's do them all.
Move to appoint Terry Ackerman of 89 Heathgrits Road to the Hanson Field Advisory Committee as a Select Board representative. Move to appoint Katie Morris of 119 North Main Street. NADIC Mass to the Economic Vitality Committee, again with an exception, APP 10, Section 7 dash G, exception for a term to expire May 31st, 2027. And move to appoint Pam Rockwell of 1810 Main Street to the 2229 Main Street Advisory Task Force for a term to expire May 31st, 2026, or the end of the project.
And I assume Katie's like involved with Concord business community?
She is, is, I'm looking out for Mimi, who's not here, but she's involved in the art from a business, business perspective.
Yeah, okay.
So she's not an artist, but she works with artists.
Gotcha.
Okay, go ahead, keep going.
Okay. Appointments and reappointments of election workers. Move to appoint and reappoint election workers for terms ending July 31st, 2025, as included in the Select Board Packet. There's a long list of them.
Yes.
Which I'm certainly not gonna try to read. And move to provide Select Board approval of the following Town Manager Committee appointments on Shore Prom Fire of 875 Old Road to 9th Corner for a term on the Board of Assessors to expire May 31st, 2027. Reappoint Nancy Nelson of 1695 Volbroad to the Historical Commission as an Associate Member for a term to expire May 31st, 2025. Appoint Ellen Cracker Bush of 206 Prairie Street to the Transportation Advisory Committee for a two-year term to expire April 30th, 2026. To reappoint Gary Kleiman of 57 Central Street to the Natural Resources Commission for a term to expire May 31st, 2027. term to expire May 31st, 2027. Reappoint and restagger the terms of the Transportation Advisory Committee members, Nick Pappas of 1743 Monument Street, for a term to expire April 30th, 2027. That has a figure D 10, Section 7, C, which is serving on multiple committees. Phil Posner of 2023, of 223 Lawsbroke Road, number 206, for a term to expire May, April 30th, 2027. And Dan Schrader of 24 Mallard Drive, for a term to expire April 30th, 2027.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I thank, a big thank you to the many election workers that make our voting happen. Dozens of them, and we couldn't do it without them, so I wanna thank them for that. Next item is the Town Manager's Report, Carrie.
Thank you and good evening. I'll start with the early voting schedule. The town clerk asked that I reference the early voting schedules, so early voting starts Saturday, August 24th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Continues on Monday, the 26th through Friday, August 30th, 8:30 to 4:30 p.m. Monday to Thursday, 8:30 to 12:30 on Friday, August 30th.
Those are for the primary election.
That's correct. More information on the website for anybody who has questions, or certainly the town clerk's office is available. The weekly status report was distributed to you earlier today. I wanted to make note of a couple of items. First, the town is going to be receiving some additional funding through the Chapter 90 Program for, through the Fair Share Grant. The town will be receiving an additional $344,261. The Chapter 90 Program is the, an annual grant program that the town receives funding from the state for road improvements. In fiscal '24, the town received $674,893. That's been pretty consistent the last few years, so if you take that with the additional fair share allocation, we're at $1,019,000. And we do add that to the roughly one and a half to two and a half million dollars that we spend annually through the town budget, and we still are looking for more to keep the roads.
But that's just any road repair? I mean, it doesn't, it's not specified to a super tight purpose? It's like we can use it?
For our annual road program, right. So, and it can be used on any classification of road that the town maintains. Just the Fair Share Amendment was approved in Massachusetts in 2022. Some people refer to it as the millionaire's tax. The purposes of the Fair Share Amendment were to provide additional funding to public education and public infrastructure. I wanted to note that we had our new Assistant HR Director, Erin McMorro, started today. This is a position that's been vacant for close to a year as we reassess the staffing in the HR Department. Erin comes to us from the private sector, where she worked as an HR Generalist focusing on benefits, training, and employee engagement. I wanted to also acknowledge the recent deployment and safe return of Assistant Fire Chief Walter Lada, who serves as a member of the FEMA Region One Task Force. He was recently deployed to South Carolina to help out with hurricane response. And then I just wanted to provide an update on three different items that are not mentioned in the annual report. First, on Jarrow. And if I could ask Andrea just to go to that webpage, we do have a new updated webpage for Jarrow. We are hoping to use this as a model for future projects, where we have some consistent information on the project, so just the project address, information about the funding, what the project scope is, and Andrea, if you could just scroll down just a teeny bit more. So we have, for this particular project, we have a detail on what I would call sources and uses, just because there are multiple different funding allocations for this project between the town's capital plan and CPC allocations. And then we also have embedded a link to the presentation that we put together for the Select Board for last month that we have yet to make, but that presentation is live. I did wanna report that last week, we unfortunately had minimal progress on the site, but I understand that beginning this week, there's a full crew back, and their main task is to complete resetting of the pavers. We are about 70% done. They think the remaining 30% will go a little bit faster. I think I've mentioned to you before, one of the issues was, they had to really clean each of the pavers to remove sediment. That has all been done, so now they're just putting down the pavers. There's some additional signage work that is to be completed in the next week or so. They are doing some general cleanup, hoping to be at punch lists with very few items by the end of the month. There is an update on benches and some of the other, I just forgot the word I was gonna use, I'll leave it, benches and trash receptacles that I will be providing to the board in the future, which I'm still working through something, and so I don't have, I don't have a specific update on that, but just to mention that you should be expecting to receive an update. And I also wanted to make note of the mitigation plan and the tree plantings. You've heard a lot about that, there's been a lot of emails on that. I'm happy to report that we are working with the Friends of Warner's Pond and others to see if we can come up with a better planting plan that meets the required mitigation, but provides a better view to the pond. There certainly wasn't any intent to screen the pond in any way, but there definitely are people who feel that the plantings that were put in place are screening the pond unintentionally. So we are working there and hope to have an update on that in the next couple of weeks. People are now, and people on this board have been asking about some official opening at the park. I do hope that we're able to do that in October. I'd like to reassess at the end of the month, because we certainly don't wanna be planning an event if the pavers at the pavilion are not down. But I think we can do something, even if there are some punch list items. So the next couple of weeks will be important to finishing the work there. I wanted to mention on the cell front, as I mentioned to you before, the RFP is in circulation for the Emerson Umbrella. We are in the process of scheduling site visits with some of the carriers, and responses to our requests for proposals are due next month. With regard to the landfill, a draft of the RFP has been completed, and it's being circulated through our departments internally. We will then send it to Town Council, and our target distribution date is October 1st for the landfill. And then I just wanted to mention, and Andrea, if you could go to the road maintenance program, that our annual road maintenance program continues. We do keep our webpage updated. We're regularly issuing updates through news and notices, and trying to get as much work done as possible prior to the new school year. This is a map that is available on the website that shows, actually, I think I gave Andrea that link, because that says 2022. We do have a map that shows the 2024 road maintenance program.
Yeah, I was gonna say, recognize that as what happened.
Yeah, I think, I think I pulled two of them, this one looked clearer, and I gave Andrea that, but there is a 2024 map. So anybody who's driving around town, you know there's a lot of, a lot of work going on, and it looks, it looks great.
Yeah, it does, it's great.
It'll be done by the time school opens, you think?
We're trying, we're trying to get as much done by the time school opens, but the paving season extends past the opening of school.
Okay, any questions for the town?
So Carrie, that new additional Chapter 90 money that we got, how will it be decided which roads or sidewalks or whatever will be done with that money, and what would the timeframe be for it?
So the allocation that I mentioned actually is fiscal '24, so it's available immediately, which is good. And to be honest, I'd have to talk to engineering to see if they're thinking they're gonna pull in another project that maybe was, was on the back burner, what they're going to do. I'd have to talk to them about that.
Right, because it may be tough to get a contractor in that quickly, and, but...
We have, we have plenty of projects that we can dedicate those funds to, and, yeah.
Right, we have plenty of projects, yep. And the Jarrow website, how do you find that on the website?
So if you, if you just search Jarrow, just if you just put Jarrow in, the first hit will be the new webpage.
Okay.
All right. That's, to me, when I talk to people, most people just use the search function to find something on the webpage.
Okay. Any other questions for Tommy? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Next item is the Chair's Report. I wanted to make a few comments. First is, I went to the kickoff meeting for the 250th Celebration, the countdown, that we had here at the Concord Museum the other day, and I noticed that all five of the Select Board members showed up to that at different times, without us coordinating it or talking about it ahead of time. And it just made me realize what a great, what a great Select Board we have this year. People are showing up, they're engaged, they're pulling their weight, and I'm lucky to be here, and the town is lucky to have us. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, that we're doing, so far, we're doing a great job. I was very proud to see everybody there. I want everybody to take a good rest, because in September, we have a whole boatload of things coming up. Let me just read off the list, okay? September 4th, we have the 2229 site visit. September 7th is Ag Day. September 12th is the MCI Forum. September 22nd is a stone soup dinner. September 25th is ethics training. September 30th is the RTE Forum. This doesn't include the two Select Board meetings we have. So rest up, because we've got a lot of work to do in September. And then finally, I've been thinking that as we go through the meeting, I'm gonna ask Andrea to start collecting action items, that, because we, we talk about action items, like tonight, I just captured a few things that we need to circle back to, and put that in our meeting packet for us, so that we can check how we're doing. So that's, that's all I have for the Chair's Report. Let's move on to the Select Board Liaison Reports. Cameron, I'll start with you.
Sure. So just quickly, Wendy and I continue on the flag policy. So we did meet last week. We are, have figured out a process to start drafting the actual proposed policy, so we're on target to come back if it works on the agenda for September 9th.
Great.
So, nothing, no big news to report, other than just, we're doing it, and we'll be back with the specific language. There might be a couple places where we say, hey, it's either this sentence or that sentence, depending on how we wanna do something, right? So there's still a couple of those decisions that I don't feel like we completely nailed in the last meeting.
Okay, yep.
But we will have those very discreet options.
Very good. So do you expect that on 9/9, we'll have a policy that we can vote on?
Yeah, draft policy, we can either vote on, or say, here's the two choices, like, hey, go back, and, you know, go back and finalize it, and then vote. So we'll have to see how we, how we get to that. I'll focus a little bit on the light plant. So just was able to attend the light plant board meeting last week, and got some, some results from some of their surveys that we went through. And so, first off, I just wanna really sort of shout out to the, all the folks that work there, in total, right? Because the group has delivered some really fantastic results, when you see what the customer satisfaction levels are.
Yeah.
Really, sort of up, up around or over 95% in terms of overall satisfaction levels. And that score is very well compared to other, other utilities and other municipal light plants. Just a couple of things to maybe call out for those who, like me, are kinda into these things, but I won't drain all the figures, but just as examples, right? So our first call resolution, it's when somebody calls in, are we solving the problem on the phone the first time, right? And that first call resolution is 76%. I know from my job that compares very well. So we benchmark, you know, New England utility top performers at about 75. So that puts us sort of at or above kind of top performers in the industry. And similarly, for outage notification satisfaction, like, hey, you're out, do you know, is somebody telling you what's going on, or are they letting you know when power might be coming back up? That's running at about 68% for us, which, again, is much better than a lot of benchmarks and what I see in some other utilities that are oftentimes in sort of the high 50s or low 60s. So some very good, you know, work that's being done there. I will say, you know, I'm gonna continue to ask and challenge around sort of our rate levels and our costs, right? Because those scores did not come in as well, and in some places maybe lag sort of what we see in terms of other utilities. So I think that's just something for us to continue to, you know, sort of work on, is how can we continue to look at how we're making the overall package sort of affordable for our citizens. And the last thing I would just report there is that they were able to get through, working with the Personnel Board, some adjustments that I think have brought things to kind of, there's been some challenges around making sure we align things to a market level, with concern about cost, we were just sort of talking about it. I think it adds about five cents to the average monthly customer bill, just to be able to put that into some context of the impact from the ratepayers.
Okay.
But we think that that's a very good thing to be doing to, you know, for our staff, and also for being able to recruit and retain top talent. So that's it for me, I won't report on any minor things around the other committees.
Great. Mark, you wanna go?
So, yeah, I'll pick up right where Cameron just left off, with the Personnel Board. The implementation of the new pay schedules has been completed, and they're looking forward to the munis implementation, which is on schedule for the fall. There was a major focus at the meeting last week on the 14th about the implementation of a market rate adjustment for the light plant, which recognized that some gaps exist, and even, you'll probably recall that just a year ago, a whole class and com study was redone. And even in the face of that, they're, they've been able to document through a much more detailed bit of work by the director and the temporary assistant director that we have, that we are still under market for the light plant specifically. And that really focuses on a couple of things. Despite the really great service that we get from the light plant, I don't think many people are aware of the fact that the light plant's been operating almost a full line crew short for a couple of years now. And that shortage shows up when, you know, just like over this past weekend, when power outages were coming, those resulted in much more on-call duty for the remaining crews that we do have. We have a very small number of crews, and so this is more of a recruitment and retention issue. That said, it's really important to recognize that one-third of the CMLP staff receive longevity compression adjustments, which means that a lot of our staff has been here for a very long time. They really know our system, and they care about it, and that's one of the reasons why some of the statistics that Cameron was mentioning occurs. And so the point from the Personnel Board's perspective is that they're recognizing this, they're engaged in why these things are happening. There were also town-wide adjustments around longevity, which is another factor which is being considered. Also, just lastly, from the Personnel Board's perspective, they are working on a new charge. The Personnel Board charge hasn't been updated since 1985, and that's an item for discussion, because the Personnel Board is a statutory board that exists in the town charter. So it's more of a discussion, but they expect to take another meeting and then probably have something that's ready for us to bring to this table and have a discussion about what some of those goals might be. Moving on to Warner's Pond Task Force, the subgroups continue to meet to develop alternative proposals at the September meeting coming up. We expect to hear a preliminary report from the dam removal subgroup. The dredging and no action or maintenance subgroups readouts are expected at future meetings. At last week's meeting, the Town Manager did present around the Jarrow completion status, and we heard from a dam maintenance engineering firm about the condition and the capabilities of the existing dam. Probably the most significant... Probably the most significant element of, of that dam maintenance presentation was the fact that there's real concern that the sluice way and the low-level output wouldn't have the capacity to potentially do an effective drawdown in, under winter flow conditions. And that's important because a lot of what Warner's Pond Task Force is focused on is vegetation management. And so it's going to really, you know, call into question what, what that particular activity might do. And it may require some testing, but we'll be, that, that was probably the most significant thing there. The MCI Advisory Board met this morning, or this afternoon actually, and is preparing for the first community engagement meeting, which you mentioned briefly. That'll be Thursday, September 12th in this room at 7:00 PM, I believe.
Yep, 7 o'clock.
Yep. And that will be presented in partnership with the Division of Capital Asset Maintenance from the state. The Board will meet twice more before then to finalize its participation in activities in there on next Monday, the 26th, as well as the 29th, and is in the process of organizing itself around key aspects of the project. And as it prepares to take a leadership role in the community engagement around visioning for MCI redevelopment. We heard the Middle School Building Committee, I'll just cover the project status at the moment. It continues to be on track with significant site work going on right now to address traffic flow and parking, which are key. They've been able to utilize the Sandborne School parking lot over the summer for worker parking. There's, you know, upwards of, of 100 workers on site there every day bringing that school in. And what they're working on now is trying to get the parking situation straightened out so that when school resumes at the end of the month, they'll be able to continue working with minimal impact on school operations. So that's what's coming up in, in the Middle School Building Committee.
That's it?
Yes.
Great. Wendy?
Okay. Just a couple updates. Trustees of Town Donations finished their FY '24 distributions, the last 10 funds. They're working on their 2025 estimates, fiscal year 25 estimates for September. And they're looking to outreach to all the contacts just to make sure that people are aware of what funding is going to be available to them. There are some funds where people don't request funds, so they want to make sure that people are aware and access the funds as they need to. And they'll look, they're also going to try to get some more documentation on how the funds are being used, particularly for those larger funds. The ZBA Committee voted to approve the use variance for the Thro Club that I discussed at our last meeting. So that's, that's done. And then the Financial Audit Advisory Committee has met for the first time in a year. This last week, we reviewed the audited financials for the town. And the committee will be putting together sort of a draft letter to this board, sort of summarizing the results and any recommendations associated with that. So that'll be an agenda item for the future. Fiscal year 2023.
23, okay.
Yeah, so we're a little behind.
Yeah, they got the 23 audit.
Yeah, yeah. So those audits. And then in September, we'll look to review CMLP 2023, calendar year 23 for CMLP. And then also fiscal year 2023 for the Regional School District. So we're going to get back on track and then we'll be in a normal audit cycle after that. So that's it.
Great, thank you. Terry?
I don't have a whole lot, but I was at the 250th Countdown and besides the five Select Board members, we had a great turnout, maybe 40 or 50 people. Also, India Day, we had a great turnout, maybe 75 people. And they really appreciated having that proclamation from the Select Board. I get a lot of compliments on that. The 2229 Oversight Committee is doing an excellent job working with the cleanup contractor. And on September 4th, when we go on the tour, we can actually see all the different areas. They've especially been working on the barrier and the cap around the holding basin. And they found an old septic system in another portion of the property that might be clean and not have contamination and we might be able to use it again for new construction. So we're looking into that. And finally, the Board of Health wants to remind everybody to please fill out the Health Needs Assessment on the website. And the Board of Health. That's it.
Great. Okay, I'll go quickly. As you know, one of the goals of the Select Board is to look at properties around town that might be ready for disposition. We had a site visit of the house at 249 Harrington Ave. People were, Megan was there. Ann Clifford is the one who organized the site visit. We had some Realtors there. We had the Chair of the Historical Commission there and we, and Russ, who's the Head of Facilities, I've forgotten his last name. But we toured the house. It's been neglected for a while. We are still trying to uncover next steps. One of the things that I recommended to the Historical Commission is that they apply for a CPC grant to update the assessment of the structure because the feedback we're getting from Realtors is that we would have to have a better idea of what needs to be done to that house. The last study was done in 2014 and a lot has happened in that building. I think Anthony mentioned earlier is that when you leave a building, it deteriorates quickly. So we need to get a better understanding of what we're dealing with. And I'm hoping that they put together a CPC application for us, an update to that study. I think many of us went to the Housing Roundtable. I think that was very well attended. The, one of the things that came up at the Housing Roundtable was a potential increase to the CPC surcharge. Currently, the surcharge is 1.5%. There's talk of increasing it to 2% with the half a percent being allocated or specified for exclusively for housing. So this would be a, you know, process that we first have to make sure that the enabling legislation enables, allows us to earmark. And I think that can be done. And then we'd have to find out if this is something the town has an appetite for. CHDC, you might have heard this, has decided to name the road at the Esbet Bluff Affordable Housing Development there, Rothermille Place. They still have to get that approved by the Fire Department. And if the Fire Department doesn't like Rothermille Place, it'll be Rothermille Way or Rothermille Lane in honor of Terry Rothermille, as we know, as a very tall and very stalwart advocate for affordable housing here for many years. And then finally, the Ag Committee is preparing for Ag Day. If you go by the Concord Bookshop, you'll see their display in the window. It's, it's quite good, September 7th here on Saturday. And also something I learned, that the Stone Soup Dinner, which is something that Verro Farm hosts, which is an event that happens on September 22nd, that pairs local restaurants with local farms, puts the food together, sells tickets, and the proceeds from that go to helping farms with some of their programs and some of the promotion that they do in the paper and promotion they do for Ag Day. That's what I have. Okay, what's next?
Mary, a question on that 249 Harrington Ave.
Yeah.
Is there any thought to, I don't know, this might be a stupid idea, or I don't know.
Go ahead.
To, you know, getting Habitat or somebody into renovating for affordable housing?
We hadn't thought of that. I think the problem with, we, I think we tried to look at, I'll look into that, Terry. But I think the problem with affordable housing is it's not accessible and it's got some issues as far as safety. I don't know. I, I can look into it. I'll look into it.
Or even workforce housing?
Yeah.
Workforce housing.
Yeah.
Would be good. Yeah, yeah. Cause we, yeah.
Okay, just a thought.
Accessibility might still be the issue.
The, the, well, we could talk about it a lot, but the, the, the challenge we have is we're trying to find somebody who would buy it as-is with restrictions, because there's a lot of restrictions on that. So that's a narrow, narrow market. So if another restriction to make it affordable, we might lose even more. So we're still thinking.
Looking at the options, right?
Yeah.
We can think about it.
No, we're looking through the options, like what are the options that would include?
I think the next step will be to figure out, how much, how much money are we talking about to get this building livable again? So hopefully, the Historical Commission will move ahead with an CPC application, but it's up to them. So we'll wait and see what happens and we'll take it from there. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to, to talk about the, the Peg Access Extension. And I think, Jason, you're going to talk to us about that?
Yep. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, we can.
So we did come before the Board before on this exact topic. Unfortunately, the state only allows 120-day extension of this.
Jason, can you speak up a little bit? I can't hear you.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
So the state only allows a 120-day extension of the preliminary assessment whether to accept or deny an offer from a cable company. So Comcast gave us their offer in December of last year and we've been negotiating ever since. Terry has been with Sue Buskey and I on the negotiations. And we feel like they're going very well and we're very close, but the deadline is, I believe, tomorrow. So we do need to have another 120-day extension of this and hopefully we'll wrap up in that time. So this is just a procedural thing for the Board to allow us to file a, a delay in the, in the denial.
So you're going to have one by December 20th, Christmas, right? You're going to have an agreement, you think?
That's our hope, yes.
I hope so too. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I have a move to approve a 120-day extension of time to file preliminary assessment of denial regarding Comcast contract negotiation expires August 21st, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is to discuss the change of liquor license at the Concord Rod and Gun. Is Ms. Gina Joyce available? Ms. Joyce, you, I, I think we unmuted you. Are we early, late? What time?
Right on time.
We're right on time.
Yeah, I can see her. Gina Joyce, would you unmute me? Hi, Shannon.
Hi. I can get things started if you guys need, but I also do seed Gina online. So I don't know if you want to give her another minute or if you'd just like me to get started.
Why don't you get started, Shannon?
Okay. So this is an application for a change of officers slash directors for Concord Rod and Gun. They are a nonprofit club, so this is something that they generally have to do annually because they change their officers annually. So Gina is now the current president. This is coming a little later than I think they had hoped because they had a hiccup with getting a DUI certificate that the ABCC helped us work through. But otherwise, this is a pretty standard application. If you have any other questions.
So we do this every year?
Yeah, we did this last year also.
Great. I don't remember.
I remember doing it several times.
You do? Good. Oh, good. Good. It's good to have some of this been around for a while. Gina, are you here? Do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Hearing none. Move to approve the change of officers and director liquor license application for the Concord Rod and Gun Club.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good. Thank you, Shannon.
Yep, have a good one.
Okay, moving on to the Concord Center Cultural Task Force recommendations to the Select Board. Who's going to? Mimi's here. Richard's here. Tui's here. Why don't you all come up? So just to get us grounded, so that we appointed a task force to look at the Concord Center Cultural Committee and figure out what was the future of that committee. And you did your work and now you're back to tell us what you recommend.
Correct. Now, do you want me to, Richard Follender, give my address, 399 Old Bedford Road?
Thank you.
Chair of the Concord District Cultural Council Task Force. Now, you all have copies of the recommendation, I assume. I assume part of the record. I don't have to read it. It is, I, I sent in copies a while ago.
I don't think we have them in our packet.
You don't? Okay. I apologize for that then. I have one copy here.
Do you want to read them to us?
I'll read it to you. It's, it's not, it's not that long. So I, this was from our meeting in June. The Concord Center Cultural District Task Force unanimously recommends that the Concord Cultural Council be granted a permanent charge to oversee the Concord Center Cultural District. The task force evaluated options for a nonprofit or other group to take on this role and determined that the Cultural Council is the most appropriate vehicle. This option enhances Concord's cultural landscape by coordinating state funding to align with our local priorities. An expanded charge may invigorate the Cultural Council to become a more proactive driver of the arts for the benefit of artists, cultural organizations, and the town's economic vitality. The task force suggests that staff support be provided to the Cultural Council to ensure that resources are managed effectively and efficiently in harmony with relevant town departments and initiatives. While not in our purview, the task force also recommends that the Select Board consider granting the Cultural Council a charge to oversee the West Concord Cultural District Committee as well. And we're prepared to answer any questions regarding this recommendation. I'm Richard Follender. Other members of the committee were Tanya Bartavakin, Kate James, Carol Wayland, and Jerry Wedge.
Thank, thank you, Richard. So Tui, you're the newly-elected Chair of the Concord Cultural Council.
Yes.
And do you agree that you think this is work that the Council should assume?
Yes, we actually had a, so I'm Tui Rogers, 30 Elsinore Street. And I'm now Chair of the Concord Cultural Council. And we had a meeting last week and Richard and Mimi were both there. We went around and basically all members agreed that they thought this made sense. So, yes.
Okay, very good. And Mimi, do you want to share with us your broader vision?
Sure. Just, it can be a little confusing. Concord has developed, has created three separate committees to administer three different grants, all related to arts and culture. So the Cultural Council is a longstanding state program to basically seed the arts around the state. So it used to be known as the Arts Lottery that was connected with when the Mass Gaming Commission advanced it. It's a grant that the town gets once a year. It's based on population. And they basically, it's a pass-through for small grants, usually between $200 and $500 or so. And that committee's been longstanding. Then the Mass Cultural Council started looking at creative economy and created a cultural districts initiative that's very place-based. It was an application program. And early on, there was no funds connected to it. It was just a way of defining specific areas where there were lots of arts and culture assets. And we're encouraging the communities to invest in those. And so Concord, which was unusual around the state, actually had two districts, one in Concord Center and one in West Concord. And the state, as part of the enacting legislation, wanted to make sure that these programs had a grassroots connection. And said that there needed to be a committee to coordinate them. And other communities administer them all very differently. Sometimes it's run by a nonprofit, sometimes by the city or the municipality with a staff person and like some advisors, lots of different models. And so I presented all the different options to the Concord Center folks to sort of think about how to consolidate it. There has been interest, at least among the districts, to look at how can they, we better, because their mandates are so narrow, it has to be a walkable area and pretty small, looking at how could we better coordinate all the, the arts and culture in Concord. I'm seeing that it's, and this is no surprise, it's a major sector within the business community of lots of nonprofits. You could say that that's really fueling our tourism in the town. There was a symposium that we held to get all the different entities together. And we're seeing some opportunities that come out of the 250th, when those folks are kind of working in concert. And we're sort of looking at some opportunities to not just leverage the existing funding. Right now, the two districts Right now, the two districts actually bring in more funding than the cultural council does. How can we leverage that better? And also look at how to be able to, by working more thematically and coordinated ways, go for larger grants than New England Foundation for the Arts, Our Place America, these ones that the city could potentially move towards that could be multi-year programs.
Okay. So the first step would be to put the...
The Concord Center.
Thank you. Under the Council, right?
CCC.
Thank you. Thank you. That would be a first step, right? And before we do that, before we do that, we've got, we have to rewrite your charge, the council's charge. And before we do that, we have to make sure that the state is okay, because they're the ones who administer the grants, that they're okay with that. We haven't done that yet. We are, we're, we have a phone call. And then if we get that, if they're okay with that, then we would rewrite the charge for the council.
And we, the CCC members asked to take a shot at the charge to...
Okay.
To just give our two cents, but we understand it's totally your charge.
Well, actually, Mimi's drafting one for us, so Mimi's the person to go to. So I think this is a great idea, consolidating the work that we do. We just have to make sure that the state's okay with it. So I'm going to open it up to other board members. Go ahead.
So, I'm a little bit confused, especially about the other district, which also has a really long name, West Concord Junction Cultural, whatever. Yeah. So, yeah, I got most of it. They are a lot more active, I think, than the Concord Center Cultural Group. And are you, I think I heard you say that eventually you might want the Concord Cultural Council to be overseeing both of these, or how are you thinking?
Well, go ahead.
In our, as I mentioned in our recommendations, that wasn't really our call.
Right.
But we do recommend that it be considered. I think that it probably makes sense to go ahead with consolidating the Concord Center District with the council, see how that goes, and then take it from there. Personally, years ago, I worked for the city of Cambridge, and there was, there's an entire department devoted to the arts, and the arts council oversees all of these kinds of programs in a variety of ways. So I'm kind of used to that idea that it's a proactive situation. It also tends to ensure continuity over time. As you say, the West Concord Cultural Junction thing has been, you know, more grassrootsy interested.
Yeah.
But if those volunteers fade away, then where is it? So I think that having a sense of continuity would be important. And there are many ideas that could be thrown around for coordinating arts, and one of the cultural council's missions could be to look at some options. A very simple one is, I know we occasionally have performers in Concord Center. That could be institutionalized a little bit, because again, in Cambridge, you can get a permit to perform in public at certain locations under certain stipulations for a minor fee, but, and if you violate the rules, then you can't do it anymore. So that'd be the kind of thing we could look at on selected weekends. So who would help coordinate that kind of thing? The other might be, this is my own personal idea, is that with our MBTA stations, perhaps at one time on a weekend day, the MBTA would be willing to devote either an entire train or at least some cars on a train to an art train. It would come out of Boston and stop at the various art locations, Waltham, Concord, Cambridge possibly, all the way out to Fitchburg. And like in Concord, you'd have the two stations, we could set up transportation, free transportation on some electric vehicle or something to get people around town. I'm just throwing these out. But those are the kind of things that could be engendered to, you know, enhance the business community, enhance an already vital artistic community. And I think that that kind of thinking could be beneficial for the town going forward.
Well, Richard has indicated that he does not want to serve on the Concord Cultural Council. We do know where he lives.
Okay. Well, I'm trying to understand how this is going to work, because I guess it seems sort of lopsided to me that the cultural council would be overseeing one of the districts, not the other district, but the cultural council is sometimes a pass-through for some of these state grants that then end. So how would members vote?
I think I can clarify this for you, because it is confusing. And I will confess that the, our cultural council has been, I don't want to use the word sleepy, but we're just a small group that's administered these small amounts.
Exactly.
And we're always amazed that people are happy to get them, but they are.
Right.
And we administer those amounts to West Concord and Concord generally. That's our charge. And we didn't really understand the West Concord Center Cultural District either...
Right.
...a year ago. But they have been vibrant, and I think that what we're doing now is we will keep our charge of distributing the roughly $14,000 that the Concord Cultural Council gets to distribute the way we have throughout the whole town, and we'll add to it the charge of dealing with the geographic-specific...
Exactly.
...Concord Center Cultural District.
And there won't be a conflict between those two missions, I guess?
No, because it's all Concord. We already have Concord-specific, the town gives the cultural council $2,000 to be given to people specifically in Concord. So we already have that amount that we have to earmark for just Concord. For, you know, we give to, say, the Fitchburg Art Museum where Concord artists will go or other things outside where we know Concord residents will go and perform or show their art. But, so we're already used to a mixed function. This will mean that we will need to meet a few more times a year, and I have looked already at the draft charge that Mimi's put together, and I think, I think this is all heading in the right direction. I, we have no aspiration to fold in the West Concord Center Cultural District, but should that, you know, later on be required, I think, once we worked with the Concord Center Cultural District, we would be ready to if they decide they want to do it. They're running very well right now. They're quite delighted, I think, to be doing their own thing, and why change that if they don't want to? And actually, that might be a call that the select board might want later, because...
Exactly.
Yeah, it's up to...
Exactly. Yeah. When we write, right. When we write your charge, which we're not doing tonight, we're really just talking about taking your recommendation and disbanding you, we will address what we're talking about now, and down the road, we might rewrite your charge to expand it, but not, we're not thinking of doing that now. This is just one step.
If I can just quickly make one other point. Concord already, through the departments, already engaged in a number of cultural activities, from the library, for example.
Yep.
From the rec department that holds summer concerts. I think all of those things, a couple of years ago, I was on the Library Friends and to discover that the library and the rec department had scheduled free concerts on exactly the same days, on four days, in the summer.
Wow.
Two free, one Concord, well, maybe people were happy from West Concord, they didn't have to come all the way over here to the library lawn and vice versa. But that, to me, said, wow, that's, that's not a great use of resources. So even something simple, look, who are the town, are there town departments that should at least be included in any kind of overall...
Good point.
...art strategy for the town?
Good point.
Those are at least two departments. I don't know if they're...
That's a good point, as far as coordination. I just want to point out that we're not talking about a lot of money with the grants.
Right.
It's not, but I think that what it leverages as far as economic development in town is something that if we were able to quantify that, I think that would be impressive. Anybody else have any questions?
I mean, I guess, I would just say two things. We've always had a lot of committees, so to the degree that we can consolidate a couple, that's in the right direction.
Yep. Good point.
To Mimi's point about potential opportunities for greater grants, if we can evolve that, that's wonderful. So I think we're moving in the right direction. And I do agree, West Concord is a very different cultural group, and I was at that last meeting, I don't know, four or five months ago, and they operate independently pretty well, and it can evolve over time. So, one step at a time.
When do you think you'll be ready for the, to come to us with a charge, or advise charge? What do you think, Mimi?
Our members are meant to get Mimi the, our comments by Wednesday.
Okay.
So that she has some time to put them all together.
Great. September 9th, maybe?
Yep.
Okay. I'll put you down for the 9th, and we'll see. Great. Any other questions?
No.
No? So I need a vote to thank the task force and disband, disband them?
Oh, we...
Or I need a motion?
Are we just banning them before we...
Yeah, because their work is done.
Okay.
We have to rewrite their charge.
We do have to rewrite the charge. We can dissolve this before we do that.
Yes, we can. So do I have a motion to dissolve the Concord Center Cultural Task Force?
Some moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Richard, and thank you for all the members of your task force.
Thank you.
And thank you, Tui, for taking it on. Thank you, Mimi. Okay. The next thing on our agenda is the intermunicipal agreement. This comes to us because it is, in fact, an intermunicipal agreement.
Melanie Denis, the Public Health Director. How are you?
Good. Are you a Concord, you don't live in Concord, right?
I do not live in Concord.
Good, okay, that's fine. Just checking. I wish you did.
No, I live in Beverly.
Okay.
I have a presentation. Could you post it up there, please? So in January of 2023, we embarked and established the Concord Behavioral Health Collaborative. That is a group of stakeholders in town and throughout town with our real charge from the town manager to work on how we wanted to spend the opioid settlement monies. Our group meets about every six weeks, and to date, the best use of the money, we feel, this is a substance use prevention coordinator funded for a regional, full-time regional Every year, this Concord Carlel Schools do a youth risk behavior survey. We do look at this data as a group and understand the needs of our youth, and then now we have our needs assessments, we're trying to get all the adults' needs, so please fill it out. We, mental health being our number-one concern, but substance use connected to mental health is also of concern, marijuana, alcohol consumption. So we, next slide, thank you, drafted a position with our Public Health Excellence Grant Coordinator. Sudbury is the host community of that work. We have a regional inspector, a regional coordinator, a regional public health communication specialist. We have a budget proposed, and they will be, an individual of the seven community members, they will be overseeing all substance use prevention with, working with our group, our collaborative in every town. All right? Each town has a representative on the voting, so I'm a voting member for the town of Concord. We have the advisory committee that supervises this, and the staff people are listed there. The cost is going to be taken at about approximately $100,000 for this person, their salary, their fringe, and a little bit of budget items. Concord will pay about 21% of that. That is determined by population. The opioid settlement monies were disseminated by population. We felt this was the most equitable way to then separate the monies. Should go next slide. This is a draft of a proposed salary for FY '25, based on the Sudbury's salaries compensation schedule, minor phone and computer needs to date. And then next, the last slide, is our contribution. So we drafted, and our committee reviewed and approved our budget, approximate annual budget of the cost for the personnel. To date, we embarked in Narcan dissemination. If anyone's been to the library, we've used some of the opioid settlement monies to just do a Narcan training for employees. We have a Narcan training scheduled for next week, and a little bit of supplies to a tune of approximately $30,000. And I did a rough estimate, it's an 18-year commitment. The monies are going to be disseminated over 18 years. Trying to get it, like, what's the commitment? Do we have enough funds in our responsibilities? So this is just a, kind of like a rough, like, projecting about the personnel costs and any other costs to date. The plan would be for this person to then write grants and find other sources of funding as we develop and understand the needs of the communities. Any questions?
So the host community is Sudbury, so they're hiring the employee...
Correct.
Administration. And the 18-year commitment that's listed in here is Concord's share of it?
So that is Concord's share. Mm-hmm.
So, and yet, the current fund anticipated, what...
So that's the $661,000 of the two funds that have currently been scheduled, right? Right now, the town has 166 in its, like, pot of money that have been received to date, but it's scheduled over the next...
But is it, like, potentially highly variable, or that's sort of a known quantity? It's just a matter of time?
My understanding is that amount is known.
Okay.
What's unknown is the, whatever, the outcome of the Sackler, whatever that's going to happen with that. That's not part of that.
But that's not, right. So I'm saying, like, that anticipated is almost sort of like, you can predict, you know, that's scheduled.
That is my understanding, yes, at this time.
So this prevention officer, they're going to do Narcan training and write grants, and what else are they going to do?
They will work primarily with the schools also, and adults in the community about identifying how we help people prevent use, reach our resources when they have any kind of substance use.
So, we don't have an actual agreement in front of us, so are we looking to support, express support for the town manager?
So I'm looking for you to vote on and approve an inadmissible agreement to enter in and contribute that amount of money, approximately $21,000, of which we have opioid settlement monies allocated for. Six months notice to get out, it's all in the agreement. How do I get...
But we usually have an actual agreement in front of us.
Right. So are we approving the agreement, or are we just approving this money?
Right.
Well, we do need the board to approve the intermunicipal agreement. The board is the only entity in town that can approve that. Since it's not in the packet, I assume it could be included next, at the next meeting? Or are you...
I, I don't know the protocol. I didn't know it wasn't in the packet, so that's an oversight.
We need an actual intermunicipal agreement.
Yes, we do have it. I'm not sure why it wasn't included. That was, that was an oversight, but we certainly would not be expecting the board to approve an agreement that you haven't seen.
Good. So we'll see it in our next.
Yes.
And it will be quick.
Yeah. And this is, this is similar to the Regional Housing Services Office in the sense that there'll be a staff that's, are they, they're going to be hosted in Sudbury. Is it anticipated that they're going to be moving around, or how's the structure of that agreement?
Say it again?
So, for a while, when RHSO was first formed, it moved every few years.
Do you know what RHSO is?
The Regional Housing Services Office.
So it's not going to move?
It's not going to move.
This type of agreement is our Public Health Excellence Collaborative. We've heard of our Great Metals Public Health. That is set up as the host community, Sudbury, at this time, and that's not projected to move.
And Sudbury's agreed to host it for 18 years?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, that'll be in the agreement, we hope.
Yeah.
So how does this integrate with the work that the schools do around substance abuse? Does it?
That is undefined at this time. So they do a lot of work within the schools. We would be working with the schools and then with other partners in the community.
Okay. And this is all funded through our, the opioid settlement, but is this all of our settlement allocation?
It will account for most of it. The last slide shows kind of an estimate that how much it would take.
So that's the difference? Is that the difference?
The current monies that we've been allocated, that's the other piece of this.
Okay.
So there's $40,000 left over. Is that, am I reading this right?
Over 18 years, I'm guessing, right? A little bit, but that's the best, that's a 3%. Sudbury has a 3% cost of living year over year, so that's... So that's a, assuming of the same person, they get a 3% raise and they cap after step eight. Like, there's a lot of factors.
Other things could go up too.
Yeah, right. Yeah, of course.
And how frequently is this municipal agreement need to be renewed?
It's a one-time. The, the intermunicipal agreement would be for the life of the program. It, there, if there were changes that were proposed, it would be brought back to the board. But the intention is this would be the governing document for this, this multi-community.
Are there other communities that are in the wings looking to join, or?
So the, the communities Bedford, Carlisle, Concord, Lincoln, Sudbury, Weston Whalen are all part of our collaborative.
Yeah.
But could it expand over time?
Most likely not. Because we have established through the state Public Health Excellence Grant, that's our, our region. So regionally.
Oh, that's, okay, so it's defined.
So that's defined. We could change, we, of course, there could be a change, right? But that is not, you know, on the horizon.
Has anybody, um, reached out to the schools to, um, coordinate your program?
So the schools are on our collaborative. Dr. Hunter comes to our meeting. She didn't today because she was busy with some.
I'm sorry, who?
Dr. Hunter, the superintendent of schools?
Yes.
Um, she comes to our collaborative, as does Lisa Kosky, the, um, head of the school nurse and past, Assistant Superintendent Kristen Anderson are all part of our collaborative.
Good, glad to hear that.
So that's, yes, is your answer. As a position that hasn't existed yet, I can't be specific about exactly what's happening. We have the Concord-Carlisle Adult and Family Ed Participate. We have, um, DBSN. We have Police-Fire. We have a large group that is integrating their efforts to try to be, kind of like the previous presentation, efficient with what we do, understand and use the assets the best we can.
Okay, I think the best way to proceed is to just get a sense of the board, whether we support this or not. And then when we see the actual agreement in front of us, we might need you, Melanie, to come back to be at, at least available on Zoom to answer any questions we have when we actually see what's on, in the agreement.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't know the protocol. I guess I.
That's okay.
I didn't understand you didn't have it.
It's fine, it's fine, it's fine. We, we're going to fix it, it's fine.
Are you under a time pressure to get it?
I wouldn't say a time pressure. I would say that we are the last community. We wanted to have the finished agreement before we looked at it as a select board, which is, so we are the last community, and we can't post the position until it's signed. Hence the, um, mine.
Okay, we can do it on the 9th of September. Do I have a sense of the board that we're supportive of this?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so the next thing will be just kind of perfunctory.
Okay.
Okay? Great. Thank you, Melanie. Next thing on our agenda is to discuss the middle school building charge amendment.
Yeah, and we had this discussion a couple of weeks ago. What's transpired since then is, um, it was discussed at the Middle School Building Committee. There was a sense, a widely-held sense amongst the committee members that there wasn't a need for, um, additional members at this time. I think that, um, and subsequently, over the weekend, we did receive a, an email withdrawing interest in, in continuing to serve. And I think, well, I believe that on a project like this, it's always valuable to keep experienced institutional knowledge close at hand. I recognize that it would remain available to us should we need it in the future. So at this time, I'm not proposing that we take any action on the charge. And leave it at that.
Any comments?
Uh, well, I just want to say for the record that I'm disappointed to see this. I know Court Booth would have been quite a valuable member with his institutional experience and his knowledge, good judgment, common sense. And I just want to point out that we did change the charge previously to add Heather Bout and having a different procedure this time. I know we've talked before about trying to keep our process the same, and it does seem different this time. So I just want to express my disappointment about it.
I, I wasn't aware of that, but I'm glad we followed a process and we asked the committee, so.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I really appreciate, um, Court withdrawing and putting, um, the interests of the Middle School Building Committee ahead of his own personal interest. That took a generosity of a spirit that I really appreciate. I think that the Middle School Building Committee is doing a fine job, and we should, they're, we should listen to them. They're not, I'll, I'll end with that. So we are. So move on. That's resolved. Okay.
Yep. MBTA Communities Compliance Update.
Megan.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm really, I'm just going to hand this over to Town Planner Elizabeth Hughes, who has a presentation prepared, and she is online.
Elizabeth, you ready? There you are.
I'm ready.
Say something so we can hear you. Let me see if we can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Uh, a little bit louder.
Let me see if I can.
That's better.
Better.
That's better.
Okay.
Great.
How's that?
Thank you, good.
Okay. So, um, real quick, this is just to provide the Select Board an update. Um, I've already given the Planning Board an update, knowing that there are a couple newer members on the Select Board. This first slide, I won't go through it in detail, but the first slide, you can go back, just gives a timeline, outline of when the MBTA Communities', um, Section 3A law was adopted. Excuse me. And then Executive Office of Housing and Liberal Communities issued their first set of compliance guidelines. The town was required to submit, all towns, the 177 communities were required to submit action plans to EOHLC. We did get two grants to assist the town in moving forward at community engagement, assistance through CHAPA, the Citizens Housing and Planning, I think it's an association, and, um, MHP, Technical Assistance Grant, to help with the GIS compliance modeling, Mass Housing Partnership. The Select Board did designate the Planning Board to develop the zoning, which the Planning Board, starting in June, held, if you saw the slide at town meeting, thanks to the chair at that time, Linda Miller, and held numerous public engagements, opportunities, and sessions. EOHLC revised their compliance guidelines. The town did receive a grant from the state to do an economic feasibility analysis, which was required to be able to incorporate any type of affordable housing component above 10%. The Planning Board submitted their warrant article. The economic feasibility analysis was completed. Once that was completed, the town was able to submit to the state for a pre-adoption review. That was done in February. Town meeting was held in April, and we did not receive comment back from EOHLC until, I think it was July 2nd. Next slide, please. That comment letter from the state had eight comments that roughly fit into three different categories. One is compliance model discrepancies. All of the, I'm calling back a house requirements under the compliance guidelines deals with a pretty elaborate GIS modeling component. Those three comments from EOHLC dealt with a discrepancy in our floodplain, how that was incorporated into the compliance model. There was a discrepancy regarding the compliance model from GIS, which takes the words from the zoning. There was a discrepancy in one setback in one area requirement. And then there was a comment regarding how roads and railroads get implemented into the compliance model. So I've met with our GIS analysts, and they're going through and they're correcting all of those, comments that EOHLC made. The second category deals with advisory comments. The MBTA Communities' law says this is by right multifamily. Site plan review was incorporated into the zoning bylaw, so there is a standard advisory comment. You cannot use site plan review as if it were a special permit process. It is not discretionary. There was a comment regarding our earth removal bylaw. Again, um, the earth removal and fill bylaw, there's a trigger, making sure, again, that these by right multifamily projects would not be kicked into a special permit process. There's a comment that dealt with our current dimensional requirements for the creation of new lots. 50% of the lot has to be upland. And then there was one more comment about if our MBTA Communities has a map, that, that map also has to be adopted by town meeting in part of the compliance. So, um, we're fine. We're able to address all of those. The last comment deals with the compliance guidelines requirements themselves, and comment number three. It was just this one sentence, "The submitted district does not meet the contingency requirements of the guidelines." So under the, um, compliance guidelines requirements for Concord, we are required to have a district that's at least 50 acres. 50% of the district has to be within a half mile of the commuter rail stations. 50% of the district has to be one contiguous area, and that's a single contiguous area. The whole district has to, through the GIS compliance modeling, has to have a unit capacity of 1,094. And 50% of that unit capacity has to be within half-mile of transit area. Next slide, please. So the district that was adopted by town meeting.
Next slide.
Andrea Shannon, if you can go to slide three.
There you go.
The total district, there were five sub-districts. The total district area is 84.41 acres. So the state's contiguous requirement of being a single district, they're stating that we have to have one district that is 42.21 acres. Sub-District 5 is our largest district that got adopted at 31.27. So we're 10 acres short. While that doesn't sound like a lot, because of those other elements that you have to also be in compliance with, the unit capacity requirement, 50% of the unit capacity having to be within the station, all of those, um, elements that, adding, just adding 10 acres, now you're at 94.41 acres, so you need, you need a little bit more than 42.21. Plus, adding acreage can add to the unit count, but can throw off the 50% within the station area count. Taking some of the area acreage that's outside of the station area out of the district can change our unit capacity. So, um, it's, it's going to be somewhat of a complicated maneuver, but, um, if you can go to the next slide, please. The Planning Board has already started talking about how to go about this. As I said, I've met with the compliance model requirements and those other advisory comments from EOHLC. And I've had a conversation with town council about just the process and moving forward. The compliance guidelines require commuter rail communities to submit their district compliance application by December 31st. The compliance guidelines do not say these communities have to be found in compliance. You just have to submit your district compliance application. So currently, the Planning Board is beginning discussions about how to meet this contiguous requirement. What does that mean? Looking at the GIS maps, working with our GIS analysts to make sure that we can still meet all of those little pieces, whether you take something out of this area or add something in that area, how they can go about doing that. So that the Planning Board can put forth a warrant article for annual town meeting for next year, 2025. Submit the, um, district's compliance application by the end of the year, but have this warrant article moving forward so that the state knows that we are moving forward in a positive direction, which is also a statement in the compliance guidelines. Have annual town meeting on June 2nd, and after that, we would have to submit that bylaw amendment to the Attorney General. So that's, that's the update in a nutshell.
So I have a question. This zoning is in effect, though. So if somebody approached us with a project and they wanted to assert their by right ability, and it was within the zoning, one of these sub-districts that we've already approved, it would just go forward regardless of whether or not we're actually technically in compliance with, with what the state wanted for this. Is that correct?
So the zoning bylaw has been adopted by town meeting. It has been submitted to the Attorney General's office. We have not heard back from the Attorney General yet on its adoption. But assuming that the Attorney General, you know, finds no procedural flaws or major defects in the zoning, it is still zoning. It is, it is adopted by town meeting regardless of the state's compliance guidelines, correct? It is no different than any other zoning bylaw amendment that gets adopted by town meeting.
So, I guess I, I kind of want to ask the question, how this got missed? Is this because they reinterpreted the guidelines in some way that we weren't expecting? Because we, I mean, we, we hired consulting support for this that was supposedly going to verify our calculations, and it sounds like it didn't quite work out.
It, it is, it is an interpretation that was provided by the state. It is not something that is expressly stated in the compliance guidelines.
Wait, say that again, Elizabeth. Would you repeat that?
So the compliance guidelines talk about having 50% of the district
Yep.
within, um, the half-mile radius. And it, it does not specifically say, um, 50% and having a single contiguous district. That is information that the state has interpreted.
So could we negotiate with, could we negotiate with them? I mean, it sounds like the rules.
I do not believe so. We are not the, we are not the only community that has been, you know, in this same position. There are quite a few cities that are, you know, in, it, it's a little bit easier for cities because they have, you know, they, they have different requirements. But we're not the only commuter rail community that's in this situation. So, um, you know, it, there's, there's pending litigation regarding the, you know, 3A law. There's, there's a lot of things in flux, but, uh, no, the state, EOHLC has, um, provided this same comment to numerous communities.
You know, I don't know. I was a big proponent of, of this initially because I thought, you know, it was, it was the law, and we should do what we can to comply with the law. But when the law becomes ambiguous and kind of changes after you've done due diligence in good faith to meet the law, I'm less inclined to, I have to just be honest, I'm, I'm less inclined to do a whole bunch of work to get it, and to advocate in front of town meeting again when we've already been down this road. I'm frustrated.
I also can't help but think that somehow. I also can't help but think that somehow the challenges of having two MBTA commuter rail stations complicates the, the allocation of, of area to, to-
Yeah, the continuous thing, right.
Yeah, and so it's, you know, if what we're really hung up on, if there's got to be one that contains 50% or more of the site, then, I mean, setting aside the fact that we're not really exactly balanced between the two, the two commuter, commuter rail locations, we do have, you know, more availability in one than the other, and-
We know where that is.
Yeah, it's just-
Yeah, and I, to your point, Mark, I mean, the risk of projects coming along in the meantime that then don't necessarily meet-
Right.
Yes.
The revised map, right, that go into place, oh, well, that actually turns out to not be in the in-state, is also challenging. And I don't know if there's anything we can sort of go back to them and say, hey, wait, we don't actually want you to approve something that's not, we don't want you to approve something that you're not, that you're now saying you're not going to approve.
Right, and if you're, if you're trying to deal with this mathematically, the more obvious way to try and fix it is to actually make the MBTA zoning district smaller, because-
Potentially, right, yes.
Then the, you know, get down to the point where it's 32.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in-
Go ahead.
There's a lot of hypotheticals that can be talked about.
Right.
And the, the unit capacity for the district we have, we're required to have 1,094, I believe. The unit capacity that was calculated for the district that was adopted is, is somewhere about around 1,175. Give or take, I don't know the number off the top of my head. So just taking area away doesn't solve that. So I, I'm reluctant to kind of get into a conversation of, about how this should happen. When you talk about having two commuter rail stations, you know, the, the planning board heard loud and clear from the community, they wanted to try and balance, you know, this requirement in both districts.
That's right.
And, and so, I mean, it, it was a very involved conversation, a lot of public input that the planning board had. They're going to have, you know, they may not have the, you know, same extents of public comment that they had before, you know, given that it's now the end of August and they need to have something, you know, by February, but there's still going to be a lot of public comment. And I'm, and I'm not suggesting that this requirement is going to make some huge significant change in, you know, having a whole new huge area added somewhere else in town that nobody's ever contemplated, but it is just gonna, you know, it's gonna have to be, you know, a little GIS tweak here and there, and, you know, that's just an exercise the planning board's gonna have to go through.
Elizabeth, it looks to me like it's like nine acres at least. So that's not a little. And if, and if it's going to be contiguous, then that's, nine acres over and above a 31-acre plot, so that's, that's a big change. I guess I'm wondering, what's the risk if we wait and see what happens with the, the litigation that other communities are advancing as far as some of these interpretations or these kind of changes in the rules that the EO HLC has put upon us?
So the, you know, the conversations I've had with town council is, you know, the, the town is currently, you know, compliant as far as what the law required. The law has, you know, required the community go through this exercise and adopt something, and, and that's been done.
Yes.
And so we can, we can, we can submit our district compliance application before the end of the, you know, December 31st. We're, we're in compliance with what the law is, you know, required and those guidelines. And, you know, this, and the community has made-
But are we?
Forward progress in meeting this. And, and the state or other communities has come back and issued, you know, provisional compliance, saying, yes, we, we recognize that you have gone through this exercise, you've, you know, you've moved forward, you've adopted this. We feel this needs to be addressed, and, and, you know, the community has started going through to address those comments. I don't think the, the, the law and the compliance guidelines that identify the different grants and funding programs, the only communities that have been cut, you know, basically cut off from those are the ones that have, you know, said, absolutely not, we're not, we're not doing any of this. Those are the only communities, so, you know, that have been completely cut off from those different grant programs. And it's, it's not something that the state has done with any other community who has actively moved forward to try and be in compliance with the law.
So I have a question, getting back to Mark's point. We hired a consultant, and unfortunately, things didn't work out. I'm wondering if the planning board wants to go ahead and comply with this new rule, are they going to have to hire that consultant again? And I, I'm a little bit reluctant to pay them again. I'm thinking, you know, I'm disappointed that they didn't know about this ambiguity, and, and I'm not sure we should pay them again.
So, two points. One, the state issued their first set of compliance guidelines in August of 2022. They did not submit their, they did not, well, issue, I should say, issue their final version of compliance guidelines until, I believe, it was August of 2023. So there was a whole year where things kept evolving and changing and evolving. The single contiguous district is something, I believe, in October or November of, and towards the end of 2023, where it was an interpretation by EO HLC. So, you know, there were a lot of communities that had already gone through, you know, the whole process for almost a year and a half.
Right.
As far as our consultants, we did not, the town did not pay for those consultants. We received three different grants for a community engagement consultant, the GIS compliance model consultant, and the economic feasibility analysis consultant. So that consultant started working with the town in June of 2023, you know, before the state even issued their, you know, I think the final minor revisions to the compliance guidelines was sometime in, you know, October. So I'm, I'm, I am confident that our, our GIS analysts that the town has are going to be able to, you know, work with the planning board and, and come up with something. And to Mary's question, the, the planning board doesn't even have, at this point, you know, have to do anything. We can submit our district compliance application by the end of the year and wait for, you know, a formal comment letter from the state. That, you know, that is also an option.
Yeah, I'm, I'm feeling that the state is kind of in flux, if, if I, that's the nicest way I can say it. And I'm wondering, I know, I know the, this is up to the planning board, but having the select board's support matters a lot when we go to town meeting. And I'm wondering if it'd be prudent to wait until things kind of settle down at the state and they get a better feel for what they are trying to accomplish with this, because this is kind of a surprise after we did all of our work to, so I'm wondering if it would be prudent to wait and to see what comes of this, and then maybe then we, you know, resurrect our, our efforts to comply with whatever they end up with, as opposed to going through a whole bunch of motions now. But right now, I, I've, I'd like to be, I'd like to have more confidence that this, that EO HLC really knows what they're asking for before we go through a lot, because I know all the work that you and Linda Miller did to get the compliance passed at town meeting to do that again, that's what I'm thinking now.
Right. There's a, I mean, the, the bar here is this, this passed overwhelmingly at town meeting with a lot of support from the community.
Yes.
And I think it represented a lot of hard work-
Yes.
And acceptance of, of the concept. And I would hate to start messing with that unless we thought, for our own good reasons, that we were improving it in some way.
Yes.
And that's, yeah, and that's a little hard, hard to see right now.
But I don't think it hurts to have our GIS analysts start to look and see if there's some options.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, is in the background.
It's not that going to the public yet. Let's just play a little. Let's see what we can do, see how significant it is.
Okay, but nine acres on 31 sounds big to me.
No, I agree, but I agree, but to Wendy's point, but to Wendy's point, I would agree, if we can do the modeling in the background, just to be like, hey, if we were going to change it to be quiet.
The other thing is, we are a unique community having two railway stations.
Yes.
So there is something to be said about, you know, should we comply in the same way? I mean, a legal argument, I guess, but I don't know what the other, there was district four and five both had 31%. I don't know if they're both around the, the rail stations, but we keep that in the back of our mind, because we are different. So, you know, I think it's important that something might be different here.
Yeah, consider what the arguments are.
We can, we, yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to looking into it and finding out what we need to do. I just, I'm not ready to, to commit that we should go ahead-
Kick off a whole formal process.
Exactly. Thank you, thank you.
I'm also not opposed to trying to figure out whether there are some, you know, after living with it or, or looking at it for a while, if there's real improvements that we want to make, that's, that's another story.
Yeah, I think I'd, I'd be really interested to see what the planning board thinks.
Yeah.
If they don't think it's a lot of work and a big deal, or do they think it's a huge deal, you know? I think they should look at the models, and we should hear back what they think before. It's up to them anyway.
Well, but they need our support.
Right.
It is up to them, but I think the chances of getting something like this passed at town meeting very much depends, I think, on select board support.
Yeah, so I think we have, we have to wait and see what they come up with.
Okay, so when do you think would be a good time for us to get, just rough, an update on this?
I'd like to, now that, now that Elizabeth has familiarized us with the sort of basic issue-
Yep.
I'd like to understand maybe from the, the planning board, when, you know, how they might like to approach this.
Exactly.
And, you know, we could ask them for an update and ask them what kind of timeline they think they should be on.
Exactly. They're not meeting until the middle of September.
That's okay.
Just, you know, they've got a different schedule.
Are you going to be in, in town?
Yeah.
Great, okay, good. So you can work on that?
Yeah.
Getting that coordinated as the, as our liaison?
Yeah.
Does that sound good, Elizabeth?
That sounds great, because I'm not even going to start talking about what the Affordable Homes Act and what communities might have to do to address additional dwelling units. So that's, also, the state is in flux over that as well, so.
Right.
There's a lot going on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions, comments?
No.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that was the last one.
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, yep. Someone?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
That was a one.